January 29, 2019 is now in session. Just a reminder, please, make sure your cellphones are off. And if you need to have any conversations, please take them outside of the room. In conformance with the open meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. When you're here to speak and support or in opposition to the project, please put your name and address on the record and give us new information. We are here to fact find, and I think you should use this opportunity at the podium to give us interesting and new information, either in support, for your support or your opposition. If somebody has already stated your concern, put your name and address on the record. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the approval of the hearing minutes of December 11, 2018, and December 18 of 2018. I need a motion.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before, before we go any further, I'd just like to inform you that today we are, we are a six-member team, and as a result, you need to have all six of us in support of your project. If, if you think that's going to be a problem for you, then I would suggest that, or you have the option to defer to a later date. Okay? So now that we have that on the record, again, Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the extensions for 9:30. The first, first two cases, calling BOA 677-280, Foddy Trinity Place. There's companion case, BOA 677-282, 426 Stewart Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Sheridan, Blue Summit Stores, 400 Atlantic Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here today to request a one-year extension of the existing groundwater conservation overlay district conditional use permits for the project.
Are the permits still active and, and, or did they expire?
They expire April 13.
May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 451-574-332, Talbot Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Derek Small, business address 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass., 12109. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking a one-year extension of the Board's decision to grant approval for 13 residential unit building at 332 Talbot Avenue.
And the permit is still active?
It is, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BZC 298-46, 1954 Commonwealth Avenue. Is Commonwealth Avenue here?
Mr. Fortune, is that, is that permit still active?
It is.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 642-117, 301 to 303 Border Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago, an address of 15 Broad Street, here today seeking a one-year extension of the permits. This project was an Article 80 project that was approved. We did change architect's plans, got to come back for board final order, so permitting took a little bit longer, so we are seeking a one-year extension.
And it's still active?
It's mid to end of January.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
On the last case for extension, calling BOA 465-908, 184 to 190 South Street.
Again, Mr. Fortune?
Madam Chair, this was, we approved this back in 2015, and the decision was entered in 8/25 of 2015. I'm looking to see if there are any other, I do not see any differences of August of 2015, so this is four years.
So that, they have not come in for an extension or anything? In the meantime?
Not that I can see here.
Okay, so based on that information, that's going to be a denial?
I'll make a motion for denial.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the case for G-Cod, calling BOA 908-076, 1120 to 1130 Boyleston Street. Excuse me, two seconds here. This is a renovating existing Egress stairs, basement and sub-basement levels, adding interconnecting convenience stair between the two levels and related structural work. Build a common corridor walls, base building core and shell, basement sub-levels. The violation of Article 32, Section 4, this is in groundwater conservation overlay district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Secretary, members of the Board. My name is Andrew Kara. I'm an attorney here in Boston at Reuven and Rudman, having an address of 53 State Street. To my left is Steve Winnick from the Hamilton Company, having an address of 39 Brighton Avenue. This case is before the Board this morning because it seeks a variance from the requirements of Article 32 of the Boston zoning code, which would require installation of a groundwater recharge system. The subject property consists of an existing three-to-seven-story masonry mixed-use building located in the corner of Boyleston Street and Hemmenway Street in the Fenway neighborhood of Boston. In order to complete a commercial tenant fit-out, an elevator is required to be installed in the basement levels of the building, which would trigger the requirements of Article 32 because of the level of excavation. But for the excavation for the elevator, which is being installed for accessibility reasons, the requirements of Article 32 would not be triggered. The proposed project will not result in any negative impact on groundwater levels, either at the subject property or at adjacent properties.
Counselor, have you gotten a letter from Boston Water and Sewer?
No, no, we have not.
Not yet? Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. We do have the no-harm letter from the applicant, and we also have the letter which makes the case, and we support a state for variance in this case. In the past, the Board has granted variances per request just like this, where the installation of a recharge system would basically flood and negatively impact their neighbor if there was to install it. In addition, because the building's so close to the lot line, the installation of a system would be well below the groundwater table, so you'd essentially just be filling up the groundwater table, and again, you would flood adjacent structures. So I do support the applicant's request for a variance for, for G-Cod.
And do we need to hold a signature until we get a letter from Water and Sewer?
We don't. We wouldn't get a, a letter from Water and Sewer since they're not going to be installing a recharge system. What they do need is essentially a, a variance.
So it's pure, pure, okay.
Correct.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings for deferrals or withdrawals. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Counselor?
Yes.
Address, please.
17 Myrick Street and 55 Eastern Street. In your case.
So you've got two cases for 1719?
That's correct.
Building code, okay.
And 55 Eastern.
I'm just going to, what was the other address, Counselor?
55 Eastern.
Okay. So let me just call, let me call these in for the record, and then I'll let you. For the record, calling BOA 896-852-1719 Myrick Street. Companion case and building code, BOA 896-851-1719 Myrick Street, and BOA 896-850-55EASTERNSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Derek Small, business address of 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass., 12109. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking a deferral of this matter.
Okay, and are you in, in the, in a community process, so it's?
One more speed needed.
Okay.
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of April 9.
So this, we will, we will rehear this case till April 9 at 11:30.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Madam Chair, we're going to do housekeeping here. The next case, BOA 893314, 36th Lane Park, is being deferred to the subcommittee on February 14 at 5 o'clock. Going to make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We go to the second page. Calling BOA 899-611, 10 to 12 Heath Code Street is being deferred till March 12 of 2019 at 11:30. Make a motion for deferral.
Second.
Nope.
Are you, you're not requesting a deferral on that? Okay. You will hear that in sequence, then?
Case BOA 888-981, 114 Milton Street is being deferred to February 5 at 10:30. Make a motion for deferral.
Where is Milton? What ward is it at?
I'm sorry?
Oh, okay. So it's deferred till when?
It's being deferred till February 5.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Going to call the first case of 9:30, calling BOA 897-046, 478 Western Avenue.
Western Avenue?
Yeah. This is a change of occupancy to a daycare center, add bathroom, sinks, classrooms, and reconfigure nonstructural walls to add a daycare classroom. The violation is Article 51, Section 17, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 53, screening and buffering required. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking, loading requirements. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Gabe Olzana-Brooks, attorney here on behalf of Action for Boston Community Development, ABCD. Confirmed that 600 million gap. The project is a renovation of the existing one-story building to operate a Head Start program for approximately 76 children. In order to satisfy federal Head Start regulations, ABCD needs to build out the currently unused basement and install a playground in the outdoor area presently occupied by a small paved parking area. Project will not change the footprint or height of the building. Project's location on Western Avenue will be beneficial to the Brighton community, due in part to its close proximity to the health center right across the street, Charles River Community Health, which serves the same population. Project is required because the building housing ABCD's existing Head Start site in Brighton has been sold and ABCD has been displaced. ABCD has served this community for more than 50 years.
Counselor, can, Peter?
Yes.
Can you please just show us the drawings so we can get a sense of it? Peter's been here a few times, so he knows, he knows the drill.
Sure, sure. Always asking, far as this building exists, the lower level is what we're asking to put a play area and a few offices in because of the FAR. We need a variance about 1,000 feet here. And then this area in front where the current parking is wasn't good for the kids, so we figured we'd make it a little level play area and box it in and get adjacent parking here where we've worked out with the neighbor behind here to replace the parking that was given.
Okay, so do you have, is the neighbor here for ancillary parking?
Aye.
So if you're trying to accommodate parking on another property, the neighbor has to come in and put in for ancillary parking?
We're asking for a variance.
Right, we're asking for a variance. Parking altogether.
So, and when is that supposed to hit the Board?
That is this.
No, for the adjacent property?
We aren't. It's just a.
We're not asking for an ancillary.
That was just additional information.
That was additional information.
So where is your parking going to be? So, so what, what are your violations today?
FAR, off-street parking.
Okay.
And screening and buffering.
And so how many spaces are you required to provide, and how many are you providing?
We are required to provide seven spaces.
And you're not providing any on-site?
We're not providing any because of the, right now, the existing parking lot would back right out onto Western Avenue.
Yep.
It's not safe for kids, and it's not safe right there.
Yep.
It was a small lot.
Okay.
So we're asking for a variance.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. So we're here to support the applicant. We held in a butters meeting, they received support from directed butters. They also went to the Austin Civic Association, received support there as well. We think this is a great opportunity to keep families and retain them in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Daniel Polanco on behalf of Counselor Mark Ciomo. Also like to go on record and support the project.
Good morning. Karen Foley, Counselor, is Abby George's office. Would also like to go and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Tony Disidora representing the Austin Civic Association. This move that ABCD is making to, to North Brighton is necessitated by development that's taking place up in Washington Street in Brighton. So we are welcoming them to our community. They provide vital human services to families in need, and some of the issues that were brought up regarding parking and public safety on Western Ave are being looked at and addressed. So we strongly go on record and support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Can I have the BPDA design review for screening and buffering?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 871-963, 19 to 21 Monastery Road. Monastery Road here. This is a two-family home, however, it's listed as a single family, changed to an existing two-family dwelling, no work to be done. Violation is Article 51, Section 9. The location of the dwelling entrance shall face the front lot line. Article 51, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 51, Section 9, insufficient usable open space for a dwelling unit, and Article 51, Section 56, insufficient off-street parking for the new unit. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Shang Yang, 19 Monastery Road, Brighton.
Hey, do you live in the house?
I, I'm the owner. My father-in-law used to own it, and it's, I don't live there, no.
So tell us what you're requesting.
So, the house has been a two-family since the 80s, since we purchased it, and, you know, it has two entrances, two, all the electric system like that.
Have you been paying taxes as a two-family?
Yeah, we've been paying taxes as a two-family since 1985. We have the record here. And so, we recently discovered it's listed as a single family in the system, so there's no work to be done. We're just looking to change, update the, the record.
And how many parking spaces are you providing?
We, we don't provide.
None?
Yeah, we do not provide.
And any living space in the basement?
No.
No? How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We like to go on record and support. This was the first of butters meeting I've ever held. There was no opposition raised there, and then they went on to the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, received their support as well. So we're going record and support. It's a pre-existing condition.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Daniel Polanco on behalf of Counselor Mark Ciomo. Also like to go on record and support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 901-357-77C, Warren Street. This is a change of occupancy to 25 residential U.S. veterans units, interior renovations of an existing steel masonry building, number nine, were to include new four-stop elevator, interior walls, windows. The violation is Article 51, Section 40, multi-family dwelling is forbidden. In Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Chairman, uh, Aron, and Secretary Fortune. Mary Marshall from another McLennan and Fish, 155 Seaport Boulevard. With me is Michael Dwyer, who's President and CEO of Brighton Marine, the project contractor. We are here this morning actually to seek a change in occupancy from the existing group residents limited, where the home for little wanderers formerly were located on the Brighton Marine campus. They have moved to Mission Hill, so the facility is vacant. This proposal seeks to further Brighton Marine's mission of providing services to veterans by working with Boston Housing Authority to do, to remake this into a residence for homeless veterans receiving assistance through the VHA BASH program. It's not their typical residential use, per se. I've been in contact with Mr. Davis of the Boston Funding and Development Agency to seek clarity in terms of what kind of restrictions would be placed on the property. It's a 20-year initial term, subject to HUD funding.
So tell us, so these are individual units?
They are.
They are? What's the square footage of the units estimated to be?
Yeah, about 420 to 476.
476? And will they come with services provided by Boston, by the Marine, by the hospital or the entity?
We'll facilitate services. We have partnered with a program, partner Soldieron, who will deliver the case management services in collaboration with Jamaica Plain VA.
Okay. And so this is one of many buildings on the campus. So how many residential units altogether with these?
This will be 127. We are currently 25% into a seven-story, 102-unit veteran preference, which we were before this Board several times.
Yes.
Which is now under construction, which is great. Thank you.
That's great, yeah.
So if we add 102 to 25, it's roughly 127 United States veterans, all different shapes, sizes, income levels, and needs.
Okay. How are the plans?
Drawings are adequate. There's no exterior work of this project, but.
Not at all.
And one of your violations is parking. What is, what is required and what are you, what are you proposing?
Yes, 15 spaces would be required. We're proposing no spaces because, again, these are veterans transitioning from homelessness to housing, and the facility is well-served by public transportation, both bus lines into Brighton Center as well as the B-line, which is very proximate on Commonwealth Avenue.
And will, will there be a, a service being provided to for residents?
Yes, yeah. We'll, we'll actually purchase a shuttle, and we'll have a call center from Brighton Marine to serve these veterans, together with 102 veterans.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We like to go on record and support of this project. We think this is a great opportunity to serve a high-needs population. We conducted a butters meeting. No opposition was raised. They went to the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, received a glowing review for the work that they do in the community, so we like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Daniel Polanco on behalf of Counselor Mark Ciomo. Also like to go on record and support.
One of the chair members of the Board, Minor Perez, representing the Carpenter's Union, would like to go on record and support of this project. And if we can put loss, Sullivan, we have to counsel out Michael Clarity, counsel on record and support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 892-932-44-NORTHBEACONSTREET. This is demolish an existing one-story commercial building, erect a new five-story mixed-use building with 30 residential apartments, one ground-floor commercial space, and at grade parking. The violation is Article 51, Section 17. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 17, the height requirement is excessive. Article 51, Section 16, a multi-family dwelling is a conditional use. And Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Ruffo, Smith Doug and Bueller Ruffo, attorney for the project. With me is Brent Burke of the Boston Real Estate Collaborative, who is the developer, and also we have the architect from Frankie French here as well. So the project actually started out as an Article 80 large project review, and it was reduced through many, many, in size and scope, through many, many meetings, DIAG process, also a lot of, a lot of input from the community, including directed butters. We're pleased to present 19 letters of support, including four from directed butters.
So tell us, so tell us, what is it that it is today?
Right, so the program today is five stories, 52 feet, 30 units, 19 parking spaces, plus one loading slash unloading zone spot. There are 35.
Is there any commercial?
Yes, there's one commercial space.
There's one commercial?
Small commercial space, about 450, 460 square feet of commercial on the ground floor. There's parking at grade, and then the, the building above it. As, as was noted, the violations are, the FAR is.
What zone is this? What zoning district is this in?
It's in a CC1.
CC1, okay.
Right. Yeah, it's about 500 feet from Union Square in, in Austin. So we, the design of it is, is meant to encourage or improve the streetscape so that instead of just the eight-foot required sidewalks, it created about 19 feet of sidewalk, including three feet of green space, and then the eight-foot of sidewalk, and then another eight feet or so of pedestrian experience, sitting, et cetera. So we have also skewed the units towards the larger units. We have 12 three-bedrooms, 12 two-bedrooms, and then the rest are four one-bedrooms and two studios.
And what, what's the square footage for the, for each section? Three bedrooms are how many square feet?
Larger than 1,200, between 11 and 12, I should say, with some outliers on the larger end.
Okay, and the two bedrooms?
Minimum of 850 to meet the BPDA's current guidelines on these sizes.
Okay, and the ones?
Larger than 625, and the studios are larger than 450. All of these were in concert with the BPDA's design guidelines to not trigger compact unit parking.
To not trigger?
To not trigger, yeah.
Excellent. And the, one of the violations is parking. You're providing 19?
Right, 56 would be required.
56?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
56?
56 would be required. You have 19 plus the one loading and unloading zone. A number of folks in the community, including our recent meeting on January 16 in the Austin Civic Association, asked us to have a spot where the Uber and Lyft drivers could come come in off the street, sort of pick up and drop off. So we've designed that inside the, it's going to be in this area over here, inside the parking area.
So can you, can you please tell us how the parking will work, the circulation?
So the entry is through a single-lane drive out here, and then we have a double-loaded back-out parking lot here, and then the exit is out the other side.
And these are existing curb cuts?
Sorry?
Are these existing curb cuts?
Yes, we'll actually reduce the size of the curb cuts.
Excellent. And you have screening and buffering for your butters?
Yes, we have five feet minimum, and then in the case of the rear yard, we also have more with the fence as well. I would note too, for the board, just finally, that there are no violations for the setbacks. That's intentional. So the rear yard setback is actually 47 feet, where 40 would be required. And the side yard setbacks are 12 feet and 10 feet, which would be, I'm sorry, 12 feet, 12 and 12, where 10 would only be required.
And the FAR here is one. What's the FAR for this?
1.9 is what we're proposing.
It's 1.9. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawing's inadequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. They went through extensive community process with the BPDA, and also my office as well. We conducted a butters' meeting. They met with the civics, they heard, they got feedback, and they drastically scaled back the project and made concessions. So we'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Daniel Polanco. We have Councilor Mark Ciomo. I would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disidora, representing the Austin Civic Association. We'd like to go on record in support. We also received a pledge from the developers that units would not be rented to undergraduate students.
That's correct.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Aulston Improvement Association. Though this project is scaled back, it used to be a large project review. It's half the size. It's still a very large project with no community benefits. It has trash outside in a very, an area with large rat problems. The parking is above ground. I don't know where they're going to put the snow without losing parking spaces. They made no concessions to the neighborhood in order to build something. We have a lot of projects in that corner alone that are being built and proposed, 1,000 units by Stop &amp; Shop. And we feel that any project going forward in that area should have a benefit to the community, not just to the developer.
Thank you. Are you here to speak in opposition? Put your name and address on the record, please.
My name is Lily, and I'm from 533 Cambridge Street, Austin, 206. Is this for the 44 North Beacon Street? I want to make sure.
It is.
Oh, okay. I think the original project was suggested for seventh floor, and then...
So are you in support of this five-story, 30-unit building?
I oppose.
You are opposed?
Because my unit is on the second floor.
Okay.
So it'll block the light and then the airflow, so I oppose it. And it's too near.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Can I first ask a question?
Yes.
In response to the opponent, what are your plans for our trash security and removal?
A traditional fence enclosed with access provided, fenced enclosed with access provided to residents, and private removal as often as need be to maintain a clean and appropriate trash area.
Okay, because it seems like there's a particular concern about that with this project.
We went through extensive discussions with Director Butters on where the most appropriate place and where it was. And you'll see in the stack of letters, there's one from somebody in particular who, you know, at length, we discussed this being adequate.
So let me ask you a question. What are the options for internal storage of garbage?
We purposely reduced the size of the building in response to...
Well, no, actually, the way I look at it, the FAR is one. The height is 35. You're going to 1.9 with a 52, 52 stories in height, so there is a huge benefit to you. Almost double the FAR. So there is, there are ways that this can be accommodated.
Yeah, we could explore a way to incorporate the trash inside the building.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion for approval, BPDA design review with particular attention to the issue of the trash.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling BOA 899-611, 10 to 12 Heathcote Street. An existing vacant parcel containing a total of 9,306 square feet, 4,121 square feet combined with 5,185 square feet, erect a two-family dwelling and a detached garage. The violation to Article 55, Section 9, the minimum lot width is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the minimum lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record. Mr. Vazella, just real quickly, the reason why I called is postponed because we have an incomplete refusal letter and no contact. That's been taken care of?
Yes.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, I'm sorry.
Vazella, 3841 Washington Street, Rosendale. I'm here on an application to build a two-family house in a lot that's in a two-family district. We have two violations, owing to the 45-foot lot frontage, where the zoning calls for 50 feet.
So it's, what's the size of the lot?
Lot is 9,306.
So it's because this is a pre-existing lot that the width and the frontage are violations?
That's correct. Subdivision was done about 100 years ago, and it's almost all of the lots on the street are 45 feet wide.
Okay. And so you're basically proposing to build a two-family dwelling with two rear garages?
That's correct.
With a driveway?
We initially had a four-car garage in our first community meeting, number two meetings. The neighbors were concerned about the size of the garage and the removal of three trees to access that garage. We downsized, we rearranged everything so that we saved the trees and we eliminated the four-car garage.
And the front door to both units are from the front lot line?
Yeah.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawing's inadequate.
Is anybody here to speak? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Coppershaw from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We conducted two community meetings for this project. There was a number of people opposed to this project, but after discussing it with my superiors and the amount of variance that it needs, one of them being pre-existing, we would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Lee Blasi, Council McCarthy's office. The council would also like to go on record in support. We understand that there's opposition in the neighborhood, and we're hoping that the developer will continue to work with the neighbors to address some of those smaller issues.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Joel Stevenson, 16 Heathcote Street, one of the Director Butters. I guess the first thing I want to say is that the reason that the lot is, is the grandfather notion of the lot, like, there's one lot, and there's another lot that's been slapped onto the back of it. And so there would be a square footage relative to size variance if this other lot wasn't put in. So it's not as if, you know, you're putting a house that used to be on the old lot on that lot. That lot is fundamentally different now.
So tell us what your opposition is based on?
Yeah, so, well, so we've got quite a tight, a tight-knit street, and we actually collected a petition, which I can read you, sort of the objections of the neighborhood, if that's okay.
Don't read it to us. Summarize.
All right, here's the deal. So it's out of scale for the neighborhood. It does not really make sense. We already have a bunch of problems with emergency vehicles coming down the street and also school buses. There's no, it's out of character. There's no houses that have a wraparound driveway and then a parking lot in the back. And then in terms of the immediate butters, of which I'm one, this area floods all the time, and now you're going to take basically all this green space and cover it almost entirely in hardscape. And in fact, my lot will be almost completely encased in hardscape. And if I wanted that, I'd go live in the South End, not in Rosendale. The other issue is you've got light pollution now, so you've got now lights like completely traversing the entire length of our lot, and so, you know, into our house, into the neighbors' houses. And then I've got four kids, and now I've got a driveway that's going to have four cars going up and down my lot line, and that just doesn't feel safe to me. So, you know, and the other thing is like, you know, it's not like it's affordable housing, which this neighborhood doesn't need to eat. So we've got the majority of the neighborhood like strongly opposed to this.
Thank you.
My name is Jean Dubois. I live at 15 Heathcote Street, and our main objection is the size of these buildings. They're way too big. It's a tiny lot. It's undersized at the front. And even though the square footage total is big, it just doesn't work. It's like an L. So the extra land is the bottom of the L, and the skinny part is facing our street. And that's the primary objection, is these are just two, these are condos, market rate. We would be happy with a single-family home or something smaller, but not like this.
Thank you. Just to clarify, so this, this lot is, these are not two separate lots. This is one L-shaped lot?
It's been subdivided, and the lots merged together into one L-shaped lot.
And that's the 9,000 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay. And how short are you on lot width and lot front, lot width essentially?
Five feet. We have 45 where 50 is required.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
To approve continuing BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 892-884-30 Arlington Street. There is companion case, BOA 892-893-32 Arlington Street. This is for 30 Arlington. This is a building, a three-family dwelling. Violation to Article 69, Section 27, screening and buffering. Article 69, Section 29, insufficient parking, off-street parking and loading. Article 69, Section 8, three families forbidden. Article 69, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 69, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article 69, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 69, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article 69, Section 9, insufficient open space. This is for 32 Arlington, combining parcels to become one parcel, then subdivided into Lot A, to be known as 32 Arlington Street, with 6,037 square feet, and Lot B, to be known as 30 Arlington Street, with 5,729 square feet. Violation to Article 69, Section 29.4, off-street parking location. Article 69, Section 9, existing two-family shall result in the insufficient additional lot area per unit of 8,000 square feet required. Article 69, Section 9, excessive FAR, .5 is the max. And Article 69, Section 9, insufficient open space, 1750 unit is required. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Louis Crespo from 32 Arlington Street.
And my name is Cheryl Vero of Austin 32 Arlington Street.
So tell us what you're proposing to do.
So we're proposing to build a three-family home, three-bedroom, two-bath per unit, approximately 1,400 square feet per unit, with the parking in the rear, two parking spaces per unit, and the aesthetics to look like the 32 Arlington Street. So we'll go according to the neighborhood.
Tell us, so one of the things that we get concerned about is when we have a building that meets the zoning requirements, and then with the subdivision, both parcels do not meet the zoning requirement. So tell us about 32, which has the existing building on it. Because that, that, there is a whole number of violations that are triggered, but tell me about the parking.
So the parking, so there's going to be 10 parking spaces to...
10 parking spaces at 32 Arlington?
Sorry. Four parking spaces for 32 Arlington Street and six parking spaces for 30 Arlington Street.
Okay. And what's required per dwelling unit?
Two per unit.
Two per unit?
Yep.
So, okay, so you meet the parking requirement then?
Correct.
So where is the, where, where is the parking at 32? Is it in the front yard?
It would be in the rear of the buildings.
In the rear?
So they would be sharing a shared driveway.
And will that be registered at the registry of deeds?
Yes, it would.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawing's inadequate.
On the parking at 32, at 32 Arlington, it looks like there's a parking requirement of, as far as location is concerned? What does, what do the plans show?
At 32, there's a paved parking area in the rear.
It's in the rear, okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of my colleague Brian Flynn, we would like to go on record in support of this project. There was a community process that was held, and neighbors were generally favorable to the proposal. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Walter Applewhite, Council McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And you'll, and that parcel will be registered as shared parking? Okay, excellent.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 874-269, 80 to 88 Wells Avenue. This is demolish an old single-story building and putting up a new three-story building for a hairdresser, convenience store, real estate office on the first floor and nine residential units above. Violation to Article 10, Section 1, accessory parking, 25 percent of the rear of the yard. Article 65, Section 15, MFR use is conditional. Article 65, Section 16, excessive FAR, 1.0 is the max. Article 65, Section 16, insufficient open space, 50 square feet unit is required. Article 65, Section 15, a bodyyard establishment at basement level is conditional use. Article 65, Section 39, screening and buffering, a six-foot fence in front of the yard or corner locks is not allowed. Article 65, Section 39, screening and buffering. Article 65, Section 41, insufficient parking. And Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking and load requirements to design, access, maneuverability, and size. Name and address for the record, please.
William Paquette, project architect, Design &amp; Associates Architects, 374 Combs Street.
Bill, could you speak up a little bit? I'm having tough time hearing today. That just, so, tell us what's being proposed.
What's being proposed today is a replacement for a commercial building that was burned out a couple of years ago. And on the same lot, we'll demolish that building and construct a building of three stories, ground-floor commercial, with two stories of residential above. We're proposing three commercial units at the ground floor and the, with one studio residential unit. And the two floors above each have four units, two, four two-bedroom units on each floor for a total of nine residential units. We're also proposing eight off-street parking spaces in the rear of the building.
What's required on parking?
Parking requirements for the residential alone would be 11 spaces. We're proposing eight spaces with no parking for the commercial.
And no parking for the commercial?
That's correct.
Is there parking in vicinity?
There is simply on-street parking in the vicinity.
And what is the violation about screening and buffering about a fence? What is that?
Well, the screening and buffering, the ISDM interpreted, the side street, which is Wainwright Street, where we have a residential unit, was interpreted as front yard, and we have a fence that screens off the parking and the, and the trash area along that street. We have a fence. So that was cited as a violation.
Okay. And tell us about the units. Okay. And tell us about the units.
As you can see on the floor plans, it's the second sheet of the handout. The units are two-bedroom units. Each unit has approximately 50 square feet of balcony space, kitchen, and bathroom.
What are the sizes, please? 925?
They're approximately 900 to 925 square feet each.
And there's use of the basement for commercial use?
That's right.
And this is not, this is not a elevator building?
That's correct. Three stories.
Tell the plans, Mr. Olick.
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anyone, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this project. There was an extensive community process, including an initial abutters meeting. Because the abutters of this project live within two civic associations, the applicant reached out to two civic associations in the greater Ashmont Main Streets, which the commercial spaces would fall under, receiving the support of the Ashmont Hill Association and greater Ashmont Main Streets. This would be a significant improvement to the commercial district as well as housing opportunities for the local community. We would, however, request continued BPDA design review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council President Andrea Campbell's office. We would also like to go on record in support with the special request just that the owner would consider an affordable housing unit in this project, just per request of the abutters.
Is anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Michael Fawn, representing the St. Mark Civic Association. This proposal came before the St. Mark Civic Association in...
Excuse me, sir. Could you repeat your name?
Michael Fawn from the St. Mark Civic Association.
Can somebody in the back, please, close the door? We're having a hard time hearing.
This proposal came before the St. Mark Civic Association meeting in November, and over 80 percent of the members voted in opposition to this proposal. There were abutters present at the meeting that couldn't vote because they were not members, and they were also in opposition to this. Their main concern is that there are too many units in such a small lot. And with too many units, you have trash violation and you have parking violations. So we're not against developing the site, but we want less units.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else here to speak in opposition? Any response, Counselor?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I apologize. You moved quicker on the 9:30 cases than I anticipated, and so I do apologize to you and the board. Joseph Feaster for the Law Firm and McKenzie Associates, 183 State Street, Suite 6, Boston, 02109. Next to Mr. Paquette is Mr. Oliverney, who is the owner. I heard what was stated by the individuals in St. Mark's and has already been noted by Mr. Paquette, as well as the representatives from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and Counsel Andrea Campbell. It's been extensive community process that has been done here. The applicant, this property had a fire. This property is being restored and is going to have residential units as well as commercial units, one of which my client occupying his real estate office. We've had the association, the Ashmont Association, supported it, as well as the Main Streets. I know there were some abutters in St. Mark's that were not in favor of it, as has already been expressed. But I have here for the board, the unit, I'd like to submit a petition, many residents who are in support of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next case. Calling BOA 900-973-485-Ashmont Street. This is to construct a three-story addition on existing dwelling, create five-unit residential building on an existing 10,463-square-foot lot. Each dwelling unit will have access to an individual open deck, will be off-street parking for 11 vehicles located in the rear yard. The violation is Article 65, Section 8, multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8, accessory parking is forbidding. Article 65, Section 9, the flood ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive. And Article 65, Section 9, the building height, the number of stories, is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Matthew Glenn of 23 Deck Street. I'm the owner of the property.
Tim Johnson, architect, 190 Old Colony Ave., Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The original building program for this quarter-acre site was to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and build a four-story, seven-unit building with 17 parking spaces. Through the community process, the building program has been revised to a three-story rear addition to the existing one-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling to create five dwelling units. This program...
So what zoning district is this?
The zoning district, Madam Chair, is 2F-5,000.
2F?
Article 65.
Okay. And so you have a number of violations? So since this is a 2F district and you're proposing a multi-family, that's a forbidden use?
That's correct, as is accessory parking.
So tell us about the parking.
We initially proposed 17 parking spaces in the rear. We have now reduced that to 11 parking spaces. This has freed up 32 percent of the site, of the quarter-acre site, for landscaping, which the neighbors are very happy about. The rear building, the exterior areas include rear balconies, patios, but no roof decks. And finally, the unit breakdown of the five units, which are reflected in the revised architectural drawings dated 10/23/18, and the revised zoning refusal letter dated 1/9/19. Unit 1, these are all duplex units. Unit 1 is a three-bedroom at 1,500 square feet. Unit 2 is a three-bedroom at 1,500 square feet. Unit 3 is a two-bedroom at 1,500 square feet. Unit 4 is a two-bedroom at 1,500 square feet. And finally, Unit 5 is a three-bedroom at 1750 square feet.
And is there use of the basement?
There is. The existing basement in the single-family dwelling will remain utility and storage. The, we do have basement area in the rear addition. We've only brought the building down about five feet into the ground, so we have nice windows still looking out.
And so I'm looking at Page VO2, the side. Is that, what is that? Is that a window well?
Yes, those are window wells, Madam Chair.
And what's the use of that basement space?
The basement space will be bedrooms and bathrooms.
Bedrooms and bathrooms?
Correct, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And that's only in the new addition.
So that's affecting two units or four units?
Two units.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? And how is the parking working? One driveway?
Well, initially, we did need relief for tandem parking with the 17 spaces. However, with the redesign, that violation was removed from the project, and we have standard double-loaded corridor parking layout. We also have a support letter from Pope's Hill Civic Association, supporting this current redesign.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. We had two abutters meetings for this project, and they did receive the support of the Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association. The applicant has continued many community conversations outside of the official process and met many of the concerns of the abutters, as well as the neighborhood at large. Again, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jill McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling BOA 803-841-400 to 412, DePonset Avenue. This is to remove the proviso for this petitioner only and change from Riddick's Houser Pizza to the DePonset Cafe. Violation to Article 6, Section 4, other conditional necessary as protection. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Andy Tron. I'm the owner of the new DePonset Cafe. And I'm here to get permission to change the proviso from the old Riddick Pizza place to my new cafe.
What's the name of your new business?
DePonset Cafe.
Oh, right, of course, DePonset Cafe. And are you, do you have other businesses in the city, take-out businesses? Are you aware of the take-out provisos?
Yeah, this is my firsthand experience, start from scratch, so I am aware of it now.
Okay.
I have other business, but it was like transferring instead of selling everyone.
Your plans?
Drawings are adequate. Will there be new signage on the outside of the building?
There is signage. They are ready, so there's no new signage.
And are there grates on the front of the building?
Nope.
No grates?
No grates.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jill McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is this to this petitioner and with the usual take-out language?
Yep.
Does a second...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Before I call the next case at 9:30, I'm going to call 10:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30? This is withdrawals and deferrals only.
So what's the address? Are you deferring or withdrawing?
Eleven Adams Street.
Deferring or deferring?
Deferring.
What street?
Eleven Adams Street.
Okay.
Is that at 9:30?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, it's Eleven Adams. It's a couple of cases down.
Oh, okay. For the record, calling BOA 878-967-11ADAMSSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Caesar de Silva, Eleven Adams Street, with Domingos Martins.
And you're requesting a deferral for what reason?
Yes, we're meeting with the community. The community wants us to go back.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You have April 30th.
Thank you.
It's at 11:30.
At 11:30. So are there any other deferrals or withdrawals, or deferrals for 10:30 only? Okay. Go to the next case. Calling BOA 900-724-90TOPLISSTREET. This is off-street parking for two vehicles, widening an existing curb and paved the backyard. Violation to Article 65, Section 41. Location of off-street parking, loading and parking requirements. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking, design and maneuverability. And Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Amy Doe, 90TOPLISSTREET.
Katie Fens, 90TOPLISSTREET.
Is this a one or a two-family?
It's a three-family.
Three-family, and you guys live in there?
Yes.
Okay, tell us what you're proposing to do.
So there's already existing curb. We're asking to extend it so that we can pave the driveway.
Yes, that's the front.
We've gotten about four signatures from my neighbors.
We don't want to know about that. We want to know exactly about the proposal. How many parking spaces?
Two parking spaces.
Two parks, and there's no parking for the building currently?
No, just street parking.
No. How does, Bob, have you looked at the plans?
Yes, I have. Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. The plan does work. The parking's in the back of the house. And there's an existing curb cut already there.
Okay.
It's 12 feet.
And how does the maneuverability work?
Well, there's one car parked in front of the other, so obviously...
There's tandem parking?
Yeah, tandem parking.
And the, one of the violations was the location?
I don't know why, because it's in the rear of the house. That's where the curb cut is already. So it's not in the front or the side, so I don't know why the location would be a problem.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The drawings are adequate, and Mr. D'Amico's comments are well-taken.
And does the parking space take up the entire rear yard, or is there open space?
They butt up to the rear steps of the porch, but I would say 75, 80 percent of the rear yard.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, speaking on behalf of Christine Branda, the liaison for this area. We'd like to go on record in support of this.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling your next case. Calling BOA 868-026-7HelenSTREET. This is to add a curb cut for off-street parking for four vehicles. Violation to Article 60, Section 8, parking lot is a forbidden use. Article 60, Section 40, proposed tandem spots located in front of each other create a maneuverability issue. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Angela Thiers, AKA Antaly Gathers, in 8 Iowa Street in Dorchester, Mass.
Tell us what you're proposing, please.
I'm looking to put a curb so I can have parking ability for the tenants, as well as a vehicle that I use to help to take, transport my seniors to different places, locations.
So what is, is there a building on site?
I have, no, there's no building on our site. I have the building, property next door, which is 9 Helen Street as well.
Okay, so 9 Helen. How many units of 9 Helen?
Three.
Three units. And would residents need to pay for these spots?
Oh, absolutely not.
No?
No, and I can, and I'm also a snowplow, so I plow, will be plowing the yard myself as well.
Okay. So it's four residential, four residential parkings and a van? Is that what you said?
Well, what I do is going to be for, what I use a vehicle is to transport my seniors. I do a nonprofit.
So I just want to know, so it's four, just four residential vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. Bob, have you looked at the plans?
Yes, I have, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico and BTD. And the plan does work very well.
Okay. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Drawings are adequate. As Mr. D'Amico said, the spaces work.
Screening and buffering?
There's no screening and buffering shown.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, speaking on behalf of Christine Branda, the liaison for this area. We'd like to go on record in support of this curb cut.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is that the design review for screening and buffering? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're set with that proviso. He'll give you a piece of paper.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, the next case, I'm going to call him for the record, but it's being withdrawn, so. Calling BOA 818-184-7POCKWAYSTREET. We have a letter of withdrawal, so I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling your next two cases. Calling BOA 831-447-406-PAGESTREET. Companion case BOA 828-050, Two-Page Terrace. This is for two, 406-page, is direct a new three-family with three parking vehicles, three parking spots. The violation is Article 60, Section 41. Special provisions for corner lot setbacks, two front yards of 15 feet is minimum. Article 60, Section 9, the lot width minimum insufficient, 50 feet is required. Article 60, Section 9, the lot frontage minimum is insufficient, 50 feet is required. Article 60, Section 9, excessive FAR, .5 is the max. Article 60, Section 9, maximum allowed stories has been exceeded, two and a half stories is the max. Article 60, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback, 15 feet is the minimum. Article 60, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback, 30 feet is minimum. Upper-story decks are encroaching. This is for Two-Page Terrace. This is direct a new three-family with three off-street parking. The violation is Article 60, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 60, Section 40.4, 40.4, off-street parking, no parking is allowed in the front yard. Article 60, Section 9, additional lot areas insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. Attorney John Pulginie, and I'm here this morning with Harold Raymond, who's the architect on this project.
Harold Raymond, 998 Metropolitan Ave., Milton.
So please describe to us what you're proposing.
Sure. So currently, there's an existing two-family with fenced-in areas of other yards. So the existing two-family sits on a 3,200-square-foot lot. The zoning in that neighborhood is 3F-5,000. The proposal is to build a three-family house on a 4,920-square-foot lot that will be 406-PAGESTREET. And also another three-family on another lot that will be 5,341 square feet, which is Two-Page Terrace, which comes down. Now, Page Terrace, if you look at your tablets or you look at the package that has been given to you, is basically thick, and it's a paper street. So that will be through work with BTD and Public Works, that will be made into a street so there's access down there. And it also will alleviate some of the pressure of parking in the neighborhood on other people there. The, each unit of these new three-bedrooms will be one-and-a-half baths, three bedrooms, one-and-a-half baths, and approximately 1,300 square feet. We went through a pretty long... We went through a pretty long community process. The real issue with a lot of the neighbors was, A, they wanted to make sure that something was done with this land. It was, it's fenced in, but it was, people were dumping stuff there. It was kind of not great situation. It was overgrown. And the other was parking. And, you know, I was just outside and probably while I was late being called in here, speaking to somebody who has a business in the neighborhood and explaining that because two-page terrace will be tarred, asphalted, and made into a street, that will alleviate some of the pressure for her business, which is outside, this is a butter zone. But still, it's a concern because some of the residents park in front of their property.
So, these, um, these two, are they three, all three-bedroom units?
They're all three-bedroom, 1.5 baths, yes.
Three-bedroom, 1.5 baths.
In each unit, Madam Chair, is approximately 1,300 square feet.
And looking at 4-6-page street, the violations are FAR and number of stories?
Correct. So, it's, obviously, it's a three-family, even though it's a three-family zone, the zoning still in the neighborhood is 2.5. So, with respect to the height, as you know, Madam Chair, it's 35 feet, 2.5 stories. This is actually three stories at 32 feet. So, the height is not the violation, it's just the number of stories.
Okay. And then, do you have decks, roof decks on the...
There are no roof decks.
No, no roof decks. Okay. And, let's see, it's a corner lot, lot width, lot frontage, that's, okay, and front yard, and front yard on 4-6 is that modal?
It is.
Okay.
So, it's 15 required, we're at 10, which is modal.
And so, let's see, on page terrace?
Correct.
That's an odd-shaped lot.
It's an irregular-shaped lot. It's 5,341 square feet in the 3F, 5,000 zone. Again, it's, the rear yard is 30, we're at 34, but as you can tell, Madam Chair, it's just an irregular-sized rear lot. Side yard violation is 10, we're at 9.75. And rear yard is, uh, front yard is 10, we're at modal at 9.75.
Okay. And how's the, how's the entrance to page terrace going to walk to the building?
So, basically, this is a page terrace. There's a walkway where you go up to the porch, which enters this building here. So, the traditional three-family with your porch and your entry there.
And these are stick-built, right?
Yep.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Fandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, speaking on behalf of Christine Brando, the liaison for this area. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. She conducted a community process for this project, including a butters meeting. The applicant has met many of the neighborhood concerns, including the maintenance and cleaning of the property. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, remind us for restaurant and dining, the garden, the field, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 888-276-1050 to 1058 Dorchester Avenue. This is to expand existing restaurant, deli into an existing retail space to increase the size of the existing restaurant and remove partial wall between the two spaces. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conforming use is conditional. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is James Christopher, RCAL, Seaweed Project, Architect's. Business address at 415 De Ponte Ave. The proposal is to expand the existing use into an abiding retail space. The only violation is that it's an extension of a non-conforming use. The project was presented at the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association where it received support. And, I don't know if you...
So, how is it non-conforming?
Uh, the use itself, it's, for a restaurant and takeout in this area is not allowed. So, you got, the existing restaurant has the relief, the abiding space does not, so we'll be just extending that space in.
Okay. And this is seating for how many?
It'd be only eight seats. Apparently, there are no seats. It's a bakery and a sandwich.
And it's handicapped accessible?
It is.
Any grates on the building?
Uh, I believe the ones over there will be removed.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Fandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was butters meeting held for this project and received full support from the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association. We'd like to go on record in support of this local business as a great addition to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi George's office. Would like to go on record on support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, will there be any changes to the exterior of the building?
Uh, there's an existing awning and signage that will remain. If we do update it, we'll certainly send it over to the VRA for...
So, a question, so the applicant already has a takeout license? If there's no seating, they already have the takeout, so it's just expansion of the space? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 852-459-5, Spring Garden Street. This is to legalize the previously enclosed rear porches in units 1 and 2. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of an existing non-conforming three-family in a two-family sub-district. And Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Name an address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road, Franklin, Mass. With me is Josh Bloomberg, who's the owner of those properties. I just want to give you guys some plans, sorry, some pictures, and also some letters of support.
The letters of support can go directly into the file.
There they go.
Okay. So, in the meantime, why don't you tell us what's being proposed?
On 5 Spring Garden Street, this actually, if you guys may remember, this came before the board back in 2016. At the time, it was denied. There was a concern about whether the applicant had done the proper community process. And also, there was a concern regarding what kind of tenants specifically, if there were undergraduate tenants living in the building. This zoning in this neighborhood is 2F, 5,000. The lot size is 2,275 square feet, and it's always been a three-family. The violations, so obviously, it's an extension of non-conforming use of a 3F and a 2F zone, excessive FAR. And what happened when he purchased, when Mr. Bloomberg purchased this house several years ago, they were rear porches that were boxed in. And through ISD, and I've been working with ISD on that, they had asked us to go forward.
So, this is, this is what it looks like?
Yes.
So, and so, it's the two bottom porches that were imposed?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So, there was some concern about the community process, as I stated. We had gone through a pretty robust community process. I had given, I think you guys have six letters of support, as well as went before the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association, presented to them, and they also unanimously supported this proj, this legalization of this unit as well.
Okay, so, tell us about, so this is a three, three-family?
Correct.
Tell us about unit 1. How many square feet is it, is it in total? And how many bedrooms? And what's the use of that space in the rear?
So, all the units, all the units are four bedrooms in the, in the building?
Okay.
And the use of this space in the rear that you're referencing, the boxed-in space, Madam Chair, that is actually a bedroom as well. So, there's, there's four bedrooms, traditional three-family with four bedrooms, 1.5 baths in each unit, approximately...
One, eight, two, on the second.
How many square feet?
1,300.
1,300 square feet.
So, there's four bedrooms in this?
That's correct.
Okay.
And as I stated, this did come before the board before. The issue really was, you know, community process, as well as did they, who were the renters? You have letters of support of director butters, all the director butters, who verify that he does not rent out to students and that he's a good landlord, and, you know, they requested the approval.
And for the amount of rent, I'm assuming that this property could be maintained in a, in a, in a more, more neighborly fashion? How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawings are adequate, because, I mean, we're just talking about legalizing existing conditions.
Yes.
Yes. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in strong support of this. We did hold a butters meeting, and also, civic association in this area supported it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Joe McEckern, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there something you can do about the exterior of this building, improving the looks of the building?
You mean the, from the rear? Absolutely.
I mean, I'm just looking at this and I'm wondering if there's a way you could be a better neighbor?
Yeah.
Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 889-398-18A, Rockville Park. This is to change occupancy from a three to a four-family and also add dormers and extend rest day case to the fourth floor. Violation, Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 28, four apartments is a conditional use in a 3F, 4,000 sub-district. Article 50, Section 29, additional lot areas insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. Name an address for the record.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Date, please?
Could've told me before I read all that into the record.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Just requesting a deferral. The date, please?
Uh, April 30th.
April 30th at 11:30?
Correct.
Thank you. So, this is 11A Rockville? Are they, are there additional properties on this lot?
18A Rockville.
I mean, sorry, 18A?
Existing three legalized with an old, they have done four.
Why is there the A? Okay. Okay. So, it's been deferred for anybody who's here till April 30th at 11:30?
Calling the next case, calling BOA 904-465-6GANETSTREET. This is direct a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot and propose one off-street parking. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, off-street parking shall be no more than five feet from the side lot line. Article 50, Section 29, lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, unusable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking load requirement is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, President Eric Small. This is special 15 Broad Street, Dorchester, Mass. Today, I'm here seeking relief to rent a two-family dwelling with one parking spot on a vacant lot. The zoning sub-district is 3F, 4,000, and the violation is on asphalt. Lot area is 4,000, and we have approximately 200 square feet.
I'm sorry, the, the lot area is 4,000?
We have 27, 7, 7. The FAR is .8, 0.8, and we are proposing .92. Front yard setback is 20 feet. We have 10 feet, and we're going to do a modal system with the other properties that are on the street. The rear yard setback required is 30, we have 8 feet. And we're proposing one off-street lot.
And what's required?
Two.
Two. And do you have an issue with maneuverability?
No, if you look at the plan, it shows up, the last page will show the site, man, parking space on the side.
And what's about the units?
Oh, the unit, both approximately 1,200 square feet, 1,270 to be exact, inconsistent three bedrooms, two baths. With regards to community process, Madam Chair, we have...
Hold on, is there living, then there's living space in the basement?
That is correct.
And, so that will be taken care of?
Yep.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record in strong support of the project. There was a butters meeting, a neighborhood association meeting, and they are in full support of the project.
Welcome.
Madam Chair, we do have a letter of support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. After that...
Calling BOA 892-911, 27 Dudley Street. This is to create a gabled addition with ground-level parking, add living space with existing building, and create exterior decks, change occupancy from a two-family to an eight-residential unit. Violation, Article 50, Section 28, MFI use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29, additional, insufficient additional lot area per unit, 2,000 square foot unit. Article 50, Section 29, excessive FAR, .8 is the max. Article 50, Section 29, insufficient open space per unit. Article 50, Section 29, insufficient rear yard setback, 30 feet is required. Article 50, Section 29, insufficient side yard setback, 10 feet is required. Article 50, Section 41, screening and buffering required, none is proposed. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking load requirement designed. And Article 50, Section 44, the corner lot provision is in existing building alignment. Name an address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney with the business address of 160 Feckel Street. Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board.
And Article 50, Section 44, the corner lot provision is an existing building alignment. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney with the business address of 160 FEEDLE STREET. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Today, we have a proposed redevelopment project in an existing building at 27 Dudley Street.
Counselor, sorry, before you go, I'm just standing on the record. Has this been decreased from eight residential to six?
That's correct. And the new plans have been submitted ISD...
So, just want to correct the record. I will just read it back in. Create a gabled addition with ground-level parking, add living space to an existing building, change occupancy from a two-family to a six residential units. Thank you.
Thank you for your support. The project we're quoting today is an existing building, existing brick structure at 27 Dudley Street. The interior is gut renovated, or rather gutted, but not re-erected. There's an existing living structure in the rear that's attached to the building, as shown in the plans as Unit 3. With the exception of the rear shed humor in the backside of 27 Dudley, there is no change to the existing building as well. The new proposal here has eliminated some of the violations, specifically parking. Parking for this area is one parking space per unit, and there are eight parking spaces available in six units for this proposal. The unit breakdown is configured on the first floor of two bi-level units, Unit 1 and 2. Unit 1 is approximately 1,067 square feet, a two-bedroom...
That's how many bedrooms? Two bedrooms?
Two-bedroom, two-bath. Unit 2 is also bi-level, and it's, and all this information, again, just for later review, is on the second page. It's a two-bedroom, excuse me, Unit 2 is a three-bedroom, two-bath, that's 1,214 square feet. Unit number 3 is on the, is in the rear, as I mentioned, that's the existing unit, that's the only occupiable unit in the building, and it's currently configured today. And that's a two-bedroom, two-bath unit of 1,064 square feet. Unit 4 and 5 are again, it's the third level of the 27 Dudley Street brick structure, which is, Unit 4 is a two-bed, two-bath, and Unit 5 is a one-bed, one-bath, 661 and 559 square feet. And the top floor is one entire unit that's configured as a 1,400-square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bath unit.
So what is this, so, okay, I see. So Unit 3 has 387 square feet on Level 1 and 600 on Level 2, okay?
That's correct, yes. I think the best diagram to show the square footage per unit is on Page 8, 0.3, and is a chart next to the FAR chart that breaks it down, the total, because some of the units are bi-level units.
And so the basement will be, will have a couple of bedrooms in there?
There is, yes.
And tell us, will they, are there window wells? What's protecting the residents?
They are. With the change of occupancy, the building will be entirely compliant with 2015, it's a nice edition building code.
Okay, and how does the parking work? Where's the driveway?
The surface parking in the rear is on a corner lot, and the parking will be accessed from the, from the street intersecting with Dudley. So the existing curb cut is in place, the surface parking is currently there.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing your articles.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record to support the project. There was a butters meeting, a neighborhood association meeting in July, and the neighborhood association is in full support.
Thank you.
So my name is Elena Stinson. One of the neighboring neighbors to this building just wanted to express concern for the congestion and noise that some of the neighbors have...
I'm sorry?
...expressed some concern for the congestion and noise that this project would create for this particular street, and also asked that if this project moves forward, that they consider at least one affordable housing and maybe one affordable unit for a artist, student, in lieu of the history of this, historic history of this building, of Marie Starr, New Kids on the Block.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, PPDA Design Review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 904-095, 1423 to 1425 Tremont Street. This is erecting a four-story retail residential structure, a structure to house a retail on the ground floor and three-story above housing nine two-bedroom residential units. Violation Article 13, Section 4, dwelling is in a non-residential district. Article 59, Section 38, traffic visibility across the corners. Article 59, Section 37, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article 59, Section 16, the height is excessive. Article 59, Section 16, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 59, Section 16, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 59, Section 16, the rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Attorney John Pugini. On behalf of the owner, with me is the owner, Gelli Kostowski, together with Lucio Trubuco, who's the project architect. So, the zoning in this neighborhood is NS-2. The lot size is 3,511 square feet. The proposal is to build a four-story building. There'll be nine apartments, which will be three apartments per unit, per floor, and commercial space on the first floor, together with five parking spaces interior to the building. The violations that Mr. Fortune just read out, NS-2, that's an incorrect violation. Residential housing is in fact allowed in neighborhood shopping.
On the second floor?
Yes.
Yep.
Traffic visibility, we had, actually, we'll work with BTD as part of the construction management plan, to work with them on that. Off-street parking in the neighborhood, one is required, we're proposing .55. Height is, 45 feet is allowed under the NS-2. The proposed is 48. However, if you look at the context of the neighborhood, that 48 actually aligns with the other buildings on this block. And the FAR is a 3.0 allowed, we're at 3.96. And each unit that is proposed is 1,033 square feet, and they're two-bedroom, one-bath. And as I stated, three units per floor on 2 to 4, and there'll be retail space on the first floor of 945 square feet. We went through an extensive community process with the butters and civic groups, and last week presented this proposal to the Community Alliance of Mission Hill. It was a well, a very well-attended meeting, and we received a tie vote, so they would not write a letter opposed or write a letter of support for the benefit. The family that owns this property, longtime Mission Hill owners, they've owned this property, it's been in their family for over 22 years.
So it looks like there's entrance to a parking garage on Gurnee.
That's correct. And Madam Chair, if I may, one of the...
Is that what's causing the traffic visibility issue?
No, I think they're, sorry, I think they were dealing more with that corner. You statement the corner?
And what we did is, through the community process, the parking was somewhat exposed, but through the community input, we, and the plans have, Mr. Olick has, the updated plans, which have been reviewed by ISD, created no violation, no new violations, however, it is contained within the building, so they're not visible from the street.
And there's no roof decks on these, on these units?
That's correct.
Okay. And any, and these are going to be rentals or condos?
They're rentals.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing your articles.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak?
The interior parking, where, where is the entryway?
It's off of Gurnee.
Off of Gurnee Street.
Yes.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, just saw Gurney, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to go on record in support. They've been before the Community Alliance of Mission Hill, twice now receiving full support for this proposal. We also held a butters meeting where more of the concerns had to do with where the trash is going to be stored, and they've resolved that issue by having trash stored indoors where there is space in the garage. There were some concerns in the community regarding the building that is right near them on Gurney Street, but that shouldn't interfere with their proposal at this time. So we have no questions or concerns, and we would like to see this project go forward.
Were there questions about renting to students?
That question always comes up in Mission Hill, but that was, they have agreed not to do undergraduates or graduate students.
They will not, okay? Okay, thank you.
I'm Patrick Mahoney. I own a property at 1457 Tremont Street. I'm speaking in support. I'm a butter, two in a butter to this property. The height of this building, the density, and the parking ratios are consistent or more on the parking ratios at many other properties in the area.
And the chair members of the board, mine are responsible for the parking proceeding, related to our efforts to support this project.
My name is Tiki Al, good to meet you. It's on the next neighborhood, I support you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve with...
PPDA Design Review?
Correct.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to call the last case of 9:30, BOA 839-661, 100 to 114 Hampton Street. Are you still moving forward with this project?
Yeah.
So this is to erect a four-story and one-half story commercial structure containing 39,589 square feet, to be used as a cannabis establishment, as defined in the text amendment of 479 in the Boston zoning code, the Boston zoning code. The violation is Article 50, Section 32, cannabis establishment is conditional. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Richard Luns, 245 Summer Street, East Boston. The petitioner to my right is Mario Semure, the president of Greenline Boston. To his right is Derek Small, our local zoning council, as well as Sam Andres, who's the project architect. We also have with us Herbie Duvernay, who's our director of security. He's present to answer and address any questions concerning operations and security. Madam Chair, this proposal is to construct and open a state-of-the-art cannabis cultivation and processing center in the New Market Business District, and it'd be located at 100 to 114 Hampton Street. This project would be the first of its kind in the city of Boston that we're aware of, and Greenline's goal here is to create a brand that will be unique to Boston and able to compete with the large publicly traded out-of-state companies that are likely to get involved in this emerging industry here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. With this proposal, Greenline proposes to create at least 30 full-time jobs for Boston residents and generate revenue for the surrounding community. This facility will substantially improve the property value, security and safety of the land, and surrounding unit will not result in a detrimental impact to the neighborhood, which is a stated goal of the conditional use permit requirements. By way of site characteristics, Madam Chair, this proposed project, we located on about a 25,000-square-foot lot that's essentially vacant and used for vehicle and material storage. The site is surrounded by a number of industrial and manufacturing uses, and includes, including a trash transfer facility, storage, and other light industrial uses that the direct butters. We've provided information to the, to the board showing that this proposed facility would be in excess...
One second.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, sir? You know, this is being live-streamed, so it's all on the record, okay? Go ahead.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we've provided to this board information demonstrated this site, and our proposed project would be in excess of 500 feet from the nearest educational facility, which would be the Orchard Gardens K through 8. There is a certification from our engineer showing the distance being in excess of 500 feet, which I know is a requirement both in the zoning code as well as the state regulations concerning cannabis establishments. We are not aware of any facility that's been approved by this board that would be within a half-mile radius of this site. Again, something that's required in the zoning code in purposes of location of various establishments. Madam Chair, just with respect to what was provided to the record, and while this project was originally submitted, intended to be a larger building, throughout this process, we have worked to downsize the size of this building to below 20,000 square feet as a result. One of the things that jumps off the page, based upon the secretary's reading into the record, is the violation for off-street parking. Our goal was to design a building that met the spirit and intent of the code, as well as all the dimensional parking and loading requirements of the New Market Industrial District, and therefore, this project, by being reduced below 20,000 square feet, would be dimensionally by right, as well as comply with the parking and loading requirements.
So, so then, the only violation that's stated then is the use, which is conditional...
Conditional use permit. Otherwise, if this were another manufacturing facility, not cannabis-related, would be allowed.
So what's currently on the site?
It's vacant, and it's used for parking and storage of materials only.
Who parks and stores there? Is this...
Various construction vehicles.
And where will they be located to, relocated?
Relocated to other areas, but not part of the site.
Okay, so tell us about how loading is going to work on the site.
So, if you want to, Sam, do you want to discuss a little bit of the loading?
We'll have a loading dock that'll be accessible from the ground-level parking, accessible from the side street.
Will that be from Hampton, or will that be somewhere else?
Say again, I'm sorry.
Will that be a curb cut at Hampton, or...
Existing curb cut.
Campbell Street.
On Campbell.
Campbell Street.
Okay, okay. And when do you expect loading and trucking to occur?
Yeah, regular, normal business hours between that. This would likely be a 24-hour operation, but loading and shipping would be during normal business hours.
Okay. So tell us about the facility and processes that you've put in place?
Sure. By way of operations, this would be strictly for cultivation and manufacturing only. There is no retail component being proposed here, so one of the, I think, key elements throughout the conversation with the community process, as well as with various stakeholders, is that the public would not have access to this facility to purchase any cannabis product. It would strictly be manufactured and cultivated there and sold at other licensed dispensaries that would be licensed under the Cannabis Control Commission. As part of this, this would be, as I said and mentioned, this would be a 24-hour operation. One of the things that we've done very early on was engage Herbie Duvernay's company, Windwalker, which is a local security company to provide the security services. Herbie has extensive experience in security, is a former deputy director of aviation security for the Massachusetts Port Authority, as well as the director of emergency management for the Port Authority as well. His organization will provide the security for the building, but again, I think that's...
What does that mean?
Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we'll have a 24-hour security presence for the building. The, the operation is going to have basically every single door, gate, room, hallway will be monitored, live-monitored, and we'll always have at least one security personnel on-site 24 hours a day. And not only is Herbie more than qualified, his company, but he's also a local business. He's within a couple hundred feet of our location.
Yes, okay.
So, I actually can let Mario talk a little bit about what the actual operations and what occur in the facility, and basically give us a, just a very brief overview of what that involves.
Sure. As said, it's strictly cultivation and manufacturing. We won't have any retail on the location. Majority of the personnel will be there just during working hours, banking hours, from about 8:30, 9:00 AM till 6:00 PM. There will be a few people on location, including security, 24 hours a day, because it'll always be working. There will be people tending to the rooms, the plants, security, monitoring the facility. But for the most part, the majority of the personnel will just be there during the day, during banking hours.
What kind of work will they be doing?
There's going to be a number of jobs. We're expecting to employ upwards of 30 people, plus people. Everything from administration, security, maintenance, HVAC systems, monitoring, tagging, trimming, shipping, processing, packaging. There's, there's going to be a lot of jobs in this facility.
And when, you said it's going to run 24 hours. On the off-shits, how many people will be there?
I'm guessing probably about five or six people.
And tell us about waste, when, how will waste be handled?
So, there's, under the regulations in Massachusetts, waste management is very strict with our facility. We'll be using a granular machine that grinds it up and any type, most, just for the record, most of the plant, almost all of it, will be used in some form. There's a root ball that usually needs to be wasted, that'll be ground up and deemed unusable. There'll be no, bless you, there'll be no way to use that or any systems, but that will be ground up into a fertilizer, and that'll be in a locked storage facility that'll be removed by a contracted waste management company.
Okay. And delivery, delivery of, do they come as seeds or as saplings?
Well, to begin, we'll start with seeds, and then we're going to have what's called a mothering and a clone room, where we'll grow the plants, and we'll take clones and clippings from that plant. Then they'll go into a vegetation room, and then when they're ready, we'll take them to a flower room. There's a process, but it'll all be created on-site in a secure facility.
Will the product that comes out, goes out the door, be packaged and ready for sale to retail locations?
Under very strict regulations under the state. We have a lot of requirements we have to meet, but yes. So every, everything leaving our building will be properly secured and packaged and labeled up to state code.
And tested? But I guess you're asking something slightly different. Is there another step in between, between what the public sees as a distribution place and what...
We'll be doing the packaging on our property. We will be a wholesale operation, so there may be some clearly labeled packages, and once they've been approved by the testing facilities, they will be sent out to dispensaries or people who are going to package or process it. But for the most part, most of our products will be packaged and labeled on-site.
And then you'll distribute it, you will...
Correct.
There will not be truck traffic coming to do pickups from your facility.
Correct. There will be, there will be a licensed transporter involved with the shipment from the facility.
And so there's 30 anticipated staff? What's the outreach to the community on that?
So, part of this, and I think you'll hear from some of the people who are going to speak today and support Madam Chair, the goal for Mario has been to work very closely with the local community, to draw from the community for both job training, workforce development, and to ensure that jobs are accessible to the immediate local surrounding community as well.
These will be more than just the cultivators, there'll be some opportunities at the higher level positions?
Yes. So originally, when we started planning this process, we were trying to look for staff and crew, and we started reaching out to some different organizations that do job training in the area. And that was originally for management, lower, and admissions, and I've asked them about helping me locate people more on executive and management levels, because I feel like the more people we can hire from the community, the better this project is going to be. So, yes, management and above, we are looking for people from the community.
Just to add, Madam Chair, we have had conversations with the Arbor League and Darnell Williams, and with the Orchard Gardens Tenants Association with regard to training and Just to add, Madam Chair, we have had conversations with the Arbor League and Darnell Williams, and with the Orchard Guardians Tenants Association with regard to training and hiring people.
Among several other groups. There's probably about six or seven groups we've spoken to, to work with, collaborate with, with training and employment.
Can you talk to the Office of Financial Empowerment on Palmer Street, Seven Palmer?
We haven't, but we can.
Allen Jendals' office. How are the plans?
Drawing for us.
Any questions from the board?
Just one. Without giving away too much, the external security of the building, how are you treating that?
We'll have a perimeter fence around that, and then we'll have a secure lock gate for cars coming in and out, where they'll be stopped and checked by a security guard before they can drive into the location. And then also, one thing to mention about our delivery system is we'll be an enclosed garage that'll also be gated, so you won't be able to see any of the deliveries or people. Anything, any of the loading will be completely covered up, and you won't be able to see into the facility from the ground level.
Yes. And it looks like you have parking access to the building from Hampton Street?
Correct. And the parking, the number of spaces we're proposing at 42 would be more than adequate for it. Again, this is just limited to employees only. By not having a retail component of this, there's no active reason for public-
No, I'm just worried about, I'm just, because I travel Hampton as my shortcut sometimes, and the parking backup there, and the traffic backup there, just looks like it might end up being an issue.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, just a moment, but to clarify, are, we're looking at using, any of the heavy deliveries or anything else coming through would be on the Kimball, where Kimball and Reading come, that's a one-way street, so we thought about this.
No, but it looks like your staff parking is off of Kimball, off of Hampton.
It's actually, we're, yeah, but we're trying to avoid the traffic, so we're looking at that plan, and the idea is to not cause any disturbance to that street, or where the traffic comes.
If I may just add, Madam Chair, so this obviously is subject to approval by the Commonwealth Cannabis Control Commission. This is the first step that would allow us to then submit our letter or notice of intent with the Cannabis Control Commission. So, obviously, even though if this board were to grant the conditional use permit, there are several layers that remain in order for this facility to be forward. Obviously, we've had an opportunity, based upon the original size of this project, to meet with the BPDA urban design staff. Even though we are dropping this building down below the threshold for small project review, we do intend to continue with the design review, and certainly listen to the input from the urban design staff and BPDA for the design of this building.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support, based on significant community outreach that's been done related to this proposal, and specifically because it's a cannabis proposal, we want to make sure all the stakeholders are involved in understanding the impact that this would have on the area. It will stimulate a lot of positive economic activity in this area, specifically related to job training and workforce development. We're also particularly concerned around security and monitoring around the New Market area in general. We have significant challenges around the mass-cast area, and we do believe having more eyes and ears on the streets specifically related to positive economic development will help with other challenges. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. My name is Sean Fauntz. I'm a local labor attorney, and I'm speaking on behalf of the project. The company has made a commitment to work with myself and the Bill Moran and Associates Community Mentoring Program, which is a workforce development program, which is designed to work with local unions, to help people of color and Boston residents get into building trades apprenticeship programs. In fact, we were successful enough to get 26 people of color into the electrician's apprenticeship group last year. So, we've had an opportunity to see Green Line's workforce development plan. It's very diverse culturally, and we're in complete support. Thank you.
Anybody who's interested in speaking in support, come and line up, so we can move this meeting along, please.
Good morning, I'm Walter Hill of Social Club Barberies, and I'm-
Can't hear you. Speak up.
Hello? Hello?
Speak up.
Hello?
LeBron.
Can you hear me?
Speak up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'm Walter Hill of Social Club Barberies, and I've been a business owner in the community for like 20 years. And Mario and Green Line is a good opportunity for the kids in the community to learn other trades. And so, me and him have been talking back and forth, and I'm looking forward to the partnership when he comes to the community for us to work together. I have products that me and him are talking about developing together for the kids and showing them how to do the projects. So, that's what I'm here for, to help and support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the board. My name is Mark Carmichael. I'm the CEO of Westcon Personal Protection. I'm a former police officer for 20 years, former chairman of the parole board, so I'm standing behind this project. Mario has talked about workforce development. For my security company, that's really important. We're the first security company in the state that has workforce development. And so, Mario and his, and his, this particular project is really connected to some of the things that we're doing in our project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm Robert Lewis Jr. I support this project. Me and Mario built a very strong relationship in a short period of time, and he's been a supporter since day one. I have a television show, The After Hour, where we highlight local and young entrepreneurs from Boston. And he has been a supporter of that, and also my program, Divorced Dynasty Entertainment, where we showcase and illustrate storytelling, and also with special events. And he's been a day-one supporter of a health and wellness event that we do every other month for the community. It's free, has yoga Zoom, a lot of things. So, he's been a day-one supporter, and I know with this being passed, he's just going to continue to bring those programs first one.
Thank you.
Took my hat off.
Thank you, my brother.
Good morning, I'm Mike Bivins, born and raised in Orchard Park where this facility would be. Talking to Mario and hearing his plans, I came today to support it. He said he's going to make sure that people from our hood get jobs. He's going to make sure they get trained. We're going to make sure that it's secured, there's already enough stuff that's been on in that area. Me being in the community, I do a lot of stuff for that community. I have a park in my name right there on Washington Street, so I stand here on the Roxbury side to say if it's going to go up, and it's going to be done correct, then I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Fred Dutton. I'm the president and CEO of Hope House Incorporated. We are located at 9 Farnham Street, one block away from Mario's proposed project, and we have met a number of times over the last few months, and I'm here to offer my total support behind the project. Mario is all aware of what we do at Hope House, and has shared what he does, and I think that it's a great project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, people of the board. My name is Ben Murphy from the New Market Business Association. Our executive director, Sue Sullivan, apologizes she couldn't be here today, but I'm speaking on her behalf.
Yeah, I saw Sue pop ahead and out of here.
Yes, she had another meeting she had to run to for the state. But we are speaking in support of this proposal, despite our general ongoing opposition to cannabis uses in our area. We believe that this one will be very beneficial for a number of reasons. We've met with Mario and his team several times over the past few months, and we are very excited about the prospect for his proposal to employ several dozen local residents in the business. We also believe that as a manufacturing facility, it is inherently appropriate for our industrial area, especially as there is no retail component. And we believe that overall, it will help to improve the area by cleaning up an unused site that is currently a sore spot for the neighborhood, and blocking vision to some of the waste facilities in the eBay area. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Stan Walzak. I represent Reenergy Holdings, located at 101 Gerard Street, a director but up to the proposal. Mr. Senor came over roughly a year ago, explained to us what he was going to do. We are totally in favor of his project. Actually, we're looking forward to it, due to the fact that we believe it's going to increase security. The aesthetics of the area will be much better, and we're totally behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve for the BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. I'm going to call 1130s. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1130? Address, counselor?
271 West Fifth Street. It's the first one on the list.
I'm sorry, say that again?
271 West Fifth Street, number one on the list.
Okay. Calling BOA 891-497-271-WEST-FIFTH-SCHOOL. There's a companion case, BOA 891-508-271-WEST-FIFTH-SCHOOL. Name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Mellon, McDermott, Quintian Miller, 28 State Street in Boston, we're seeking a deferral to continue some community outreach on this site.
Make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of April 30th. 1130.
Are you taking 1130s?
Eight, yep. April 30th at 1130.
Yes, we are taking 1130s.
You got another one?
Yes. It's the last one on the 1130s. 6466 Salem Street.
Calling BOA 845-481-6466-SALEM-SCHOOL. Name and address for the record.
Once again, Stephen Mellon, McDermott, Quintian Miller, 28 State Street in Boston, we're seeking a deferral. We'd ask if you, what was kind enough to grant a deferral that we go into May. We're working with the people, businesses, and residents on that street to come up with a plan to move forward.
May I have a motion for deferral?
Make a motion for deferral.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
May 21st.
May 21st at 1130.
Thank you very much. Just to recount, I was calling for 1130s. So, if somebody has a 1030, just remind me it's a 1030. Or this is for 1130s only, deferrals or withdrawals. Counselor? If you could speak up to her, I'm having a little hard time hearing her today.
Did you get that, Mr. Porter?
No, I did not.
Oh, sorry. 24 Arcadia Park.
24 Arcadia. For the record, calling BOA 793-903-24ARCADIA-PARK. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is a lot that has a Department of Neighborhood Development deed restriction. I defer this the first time, indicated to the board at that time that we were working with DND on an agreement whereby an affordable unit could be created here as part of the project. I spoke with DND officials as little as 30 minutes ago, and we have an agreement in principle, but we need to go back out in new community process now. I therefore like to request this matter be deferred. I think the April 30 date would work.
So, June date?
An April, no, April 30th, I think, if it's bailable, would work.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? The date, please?
April 30th is available.
You're all set, 1130.
Address, please?
296 Napont Street.
Two cases or one?
I'm trying to withdraw the building-
Is it two cases or one, sir? Because I have two, two, okay. For the rec, are you withdrawing?
Withdrawing the building permit, and I want to go forward with the parking.
So, you're going to go ahead with it today?
With the parking.
Then go ahead, have a seat, we'll get back.
Yeah, we'll call it as it comes. Counselor, address?
31 Dell Street. My name is Hezekiah Pratt.
Hold on, Mr. Pratt. For the record, calling BOA 853-295-31DEL-AVE. Name and address for the record, please.
Hezekiah Pratt, 454 Lowell Avenue, and the owner is with me.
Elida Sanchez.
We'd like to defer this. We need time to resolve some of the design issues, site issues, given conditions on the street, so we need time to come back.
Is this your request for a second or a third deferral?
I think this is the first. We met on Thursday. Last Thursday, we were told that this case needs to be here before the full board. I was just hired just after that Thursday meeting, so I need time to come up with some-
Okay, now I recognize you. Okay. Okay.
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We are, we can do April 30th.
April 30th at 1130.
Thank you.
Counselor, address, please?
200 Ipswich Street.
For the record, calling BOA 854-658-200 to 202 Ipswich Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Don Weist with the Dane Torpey Firm, 745 Atlanta Avenue in Boston.
Are you requesting a deferral?
We are. This case is G-cut only, Madam Chair. The BPDA has asked us to defer the G-cut hearing till after it votes on the project. We are now scheduled for February 14th before the BPDA, so we'll be looking for the first available date after the 14th.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a date, please?
We can squeeze it in for February 26th for G-cut.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1130?
The board is going to take a 10-minute break, and we will reconvene at 11:45. The board is going to take a 10-minute break and we will reconvene at 11:45. Welcome back to the Zoning Board of Appeal for January 29th. Let me just see what I should say first. Please make sure your cellphones are off. Second, if you have conversations, please take them outside of the room. As you know, the acoustics are poor here, so we are having a hard time hearing applicants. And if you're here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, put your name and address on the record and tell us why you're in support or in opposition. Give us new information if somebody has already stated your concern or the reason you're in support, just put your name and address on the record. Okay, Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling next case for 10:30, calling BOA 878-971-60Humphrey Street. It's Humphrey Street here. Okay, this is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family and add an extended first-floor living space into the basement. The violation is Article 65, Section 41.
Hold on a minute.
They're coming, they're coming in.
Okay.
Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the recy please.
Good morning again, my name is Caesar De Silva. I'm here with Mr. Barbosa, representing Mr. Barbosa on the appeal on what you just explained with the violation.
You're proposing to extend living space into the basement, what will that basement space be used for?
My client has, the parents has moved back with him and is going to use some of those, a couple of those rooms for, to unhouse the parents, the father and the mother.
Can they get up and down the stairs?
Yes, we have all the drawings, meeting the code for the, the construction code, the life and safety code.
Okay, and where is the third proposed unit going to be, in the attic or in the basement?
That's the attic. That's already, it's existing and it always acted as a three-family but was never legalized in the ISD as a three-family.
So has it been paying taxes as a three-family?
Correct.
It has been.
Correct, your tax is being paid.
And what's the size of that attic unit?
Okay, one minute, I believe we have 900 square feet. I don't have the, the drawings is right here. It's around 900 or so square feet, but I don't have the, I forgot to label the square footage, but it's pretty sizable.
And how many parking spaces are you providing?
There is two parking spaces existing on the side of the house.
How are the plans, Ellen?
Drone's adequate, I mean elevation and the basement's adequate.
And floor-to-air ceiling height?
Seven-six.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Vandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, speaking on behalf of Christine Brando, liaison for this area, we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you, is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 833-835-6 General Weem Devine Way. This is in renovating existing one-story garage in direct a four-story, three-unit residential building with roof deck and a four-car garage. Violation is Article 13, Section 1, the lot area is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the lot width is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 13, Section 1, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the front yard is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the side yard is insufficient. Article 13, Section 1, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 13, Section 1, the building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the recy please.
Patrick Mahoney, zoning attorney, business address 160 Pegel Street.
Tim Johnson, architect, 190 Conia, Boston.
William Smith, 1245 Adam Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts.
What's being proposed?
Madam Chair, we're proposing to change the occupancy of an existing auto garage and demo the existing internal use, keeping the exterior walls and erect three stories of living space for three families. The proposal before us is located in a B1 zoning sub-district, which is the underlying zoning code in South Boston. Proposed parking spaces here are four parking spaces on the existing garage level. There's a smaller man lift, interior access by the garage for accessibility. And there is three two-bedroom, two-bath residential units proposed, both on the second, third, and proposed fourth floor, as well as a small roof deck accessed by hatch, which again will require building code review.
Is that what the building code refusal letter pertains to? There's a reference in the, from IFC about the building code refusal letter. It says, "See building code refusal letter previously through 2018." What is that in reference to?
That would be in reference to the hatch access, we're not appealing that here. That would, that would be appealed at the BBRS, the state.
Okay.
There are two means of egress because it is a four-story building. Again, it's a two-bedroom, two-bath configuration, approximately 1,100 square feet. On the top floor, it's a slightly smaller unit and usable space, but it is 1,200 square feet, because the unit, the square footage would begin on the third floor, with a small deck in the front and a small 12-by-14 roof deck, again accessed by a hatch.
Is that an existing curb cut or is that a proposed curb cut?
It's an existing curb.
And Tim, future drawings, can we not have a hard rendition of that garage door? Okay? Hard rendering. How are the plans, Mr. Allen?
Drone's adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. We did hold several meetings on it. The applicant actually changed the proposal to address community feedback and they did receive support from the Andrew Square Civic Association. Thank you.
My name is the Chair, Members of the Board, Ana Calderon from Counselor Flynn's office. The Counselor would also like to go on record in support of this proposal. They did meet with the Andrew Square Civic Association and Director Batters and they came up with a good plan that works for everyone, so we're here to support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Karen Foley, Counselor of Harvey George's office. We're in support of this project with the revised plans according to the developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion please?
Motion to approve, BPD, Designer Gialci.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 784-986-534-RARE, Dorchester Avenue. Companion case, BOA 897-316-534 to 538 Dorchester Avenue. This is for 534 RARE. This is erect a new seven-unit residential building with 11 garage parking spaces. This is one of two buildings on the same lot. The violation is Article 68, Section 8, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article 68, Section 34, two dwellings on the same lot. Article 68, Section 8, height is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, location of the main entrance shall face the front lot line. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, two buildings on the same lot. Article 27S, Section 5, it's in the South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking design required maneuvering areas in a lot of an appropriate access to a public street. This is for 534-538 Dorchester Avenue. This is an existing building on lot, the second phase of an existing condominium building at this address. This is one of two buildings on the same lot. The violation is Article 12, Section 1, lots in two districts. Article 13, Section 4, dwelling in a non-residential district. Article 14, Section 6, two dwellings on one lot. Article 14, Section 1, the lot area for additional units is insufficient. Article 15, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 17, Section 1, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 20, Section 1, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the recy please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, George Moranzio, attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway, joined by my clients Brian Kaplan and Mark Wood to my right. Madam Chair, Members, this is two applications, the purpose of which would be to erect a new building which would constitute Phase 2 of Glover Court Condominium. Glover Court Condominium is located at 538 Dorchester Avenue, 534-538, which is also the subject of an ALT application, and Mr. Fortune read it to the record. There's no work being proposed at that address. It simply had to be included in the application package since it constitutes a single lot under that address on which the second building would be erected to the rear of the existing condominium building. That second building would actually front on Glover Court. Access to the second building, and I just want to address the parking violation where it was mentioned that there was no direct access to a public way. There is an easement in place, which can be seen on Sheet 8, one of the plans that were submitted, that runs from the site, in fact, from the garage door to Dorchester Avenue. So all access is from Dorchester Avenue to the garage, and egress from the garage is directly onto Dorchester Avenue by means of an existing easement.
Is that easement A?
It's, yes, easement A, exactly.
And is B pedestrian easement?
No, there are two easements, there are cross-easements there, and these were easements that were put in place among, in between the 534, 538 Dorchester condominium building as well as the abutting property on Dorchester Avenue with 528-532. And the easements were set up to facilitate parking to, on the other building on Dorchester Avenue, 528-532. And it was actually put in place at the time that the Glover Court condominium was created with the anticipation that it would provide access to Phase 2 condominium, which we've always planned for the triangular-shaped... always planned for the triangular-shaped parcel portion in the rear. Now indeed, when my clients went about this with the Condominium Association, the notion was that that triangular-shaped parcel on which the building which we're talking about is located was a separate parcel, and the building was designed to be a zoning-compliant building on that parcel. It is in fact, however, one parcel with the existing condominium building, hence the two buildings on a single lot violation. When we went through community process for this, and this is a seven-unit building, again, as Phase Two of the condominium, we began the process with a building that would, as I say, be zoning-compliant on this parcel portion. That includes the setbacks in the building height, but there was a desire during community process on the part of the Butters' neighbors, and even during the process with the Andrew Square Civic Association, that the building increase in height, uh, being able thereby to give some additional setbacks on the right side of the building as viewed from Glover Court, to provide some breathing space above the garage level for abutting residences on the right. So what happened is that the building grew in height from forty feet to forty-six feet eight inches, as it was essentially squeezed and extended vertically to provide for some more room on the, with respect to other buildings that are pertinent or adjacent to the site.
So the, what's, what's required by zoning on height?
Uh, forty feet is required by height. We are at forty-six feet eight inches. If board members direct their attention to Sheet A four, you'll see that what happened is the, the building was, again, set back above the garage level on the front elevation. That garage level is zoning-compliant with respect to a setback, but it then goes in even more to provide more, um, opening, open area for light and air on that side of the building. And then obviously, as we get up to the fourth level, where a single unit would be located, a single three-bedroom unit, there are setbacks around that unit along the entire area of the roof. So it's two units per floor above the garage level on the first three residential floors, six units, and then the seventh unit situated as a setback unit on the fourth floor. The units mix, there are four three-bedrooms and three two-bedrooms. So on floors one, two, and three, there's a two-bedroom on the left, a one-bedroom on the right. The unit sizes are six hundred and fifty-some square feet for the threes, fifteen hundred and fifty-something feet for the two bedrooms, and then the top floor unit is a seventeen hundred fifty-six square foot, three-bedroom unit, unit number seven.
So councillor, um, on the parking, you're, you're up to seventeen spaces?
Eighteen. So at the garage level, again, access from Dorchester Avenue across the easement area. Within the garage, there are six spaces that would be utilizing the parking lift system for twelve. There's then a, again, going back to Sheet A one, there are two compact spaces next to three of the, of the lift parking area spaces. Then at the lower portion closer to Glover Court, there's a parking space next to the three lifts. To the left of that, as you come in the garage, there's a compact space in the HP space, and there is one exterior surface parking space at the very end of Glover Court. That's parking space number eighteen.
And the FAR, what's required and what are you proposing?
Maximum FAR is two point zero. This comes in at two point one one five for, again, if this site were taken as its own parcel. And that's why there are dimensional violations, including FAR, that are recited on the five thirty-eight Dorchester Avenue application, even though no work is, is being done there. It's simply because that existing building adds, obviously, to the gross square foot and the FAR for the combined site. So those violations, again, are due to the second building being built on the site. Nothing is happening on the Dorchester Avenue building itself, the front building.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support. This is a case that is on an unusually shaped lot. However, the developer has worked with the neighbors and the civic association to arrive at a plan that works for everyone, so we are in support. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councillor Flynn's office. The councillor would like to go on record in support. They have worked with Director Butters and Andrew Square Neighborhood Association, which also give their support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councillor Sabi George's office, and would like to go in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kathleen Alouskas, and I'm here with my husband Joe. We are the most immediate Director Butters. We own seven Glover Court. We have been in constant contact and involved in all of the meetings that have been taking place now for ten months, and we are here in support of the project. They have been working with us all the way along to make sure that that property came off of our property, as George Maransy stated, and we are in support of it as the project stands now. Thank you.
Please say hi to Carol.
I will do that.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a, so this seems to me that it appears it needs a two-part motion, one for the new construction and one for the existing building.
Correct. Two, two applications, two lots are needed.
So may I have a motion for five thirty-four R, Dorchester Ave., which is the new construction?
Motion to approve BPDA Design Review.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now for the next, five thirty-four to five thirty-eight, Dorchester Ave.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight nine five, three three three, thirty-three to thirty-five, Covington Street. This is to renovate all floors, new plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire alarm in a three-family dwelling. The violation's Article twenty-seven S, Section five. This is in the South Boston iPod. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Stephen Miller, Detective, twenty eighth State Street, Boston. I'm here with Detective Moore, who's the illness representative. We are renovating all floors of an existing three-family building, all new plumbing, all new electrical, sprinklers, and fire alarm, and this is in the iPod. I expect that's the only violation.
So it's, it's just, it's just a renovation. It's not adding space. It's nothing, okay?
Yes, Madam Chair.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we have held a couple of meetings on this project. We would like to go on record in support. People are generally supportive, and the one thing they would like to see is parking, which I think the proponent is also working on. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councillor Flynn's office. The councillor would like to go on record in support. The Director Butters were concerned about the parking and all the cars that they will bring into the community and into the ice street specifically, and they have agreed that they will, will, uh, work on it in the future and try a way to getting parking into the, into the existing building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councillor Sabi George's office, and we want to go on record in support, and we also echo Anna's concerns regarding the parking. It's a very narrow street, and it's a tight corner, and there's a lot of parking, and there's going to be a lot of cars there. And also, there's a concern about the cleanliness of the area, and they have agreed to keep that clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, while the drawings are adequate, I am curious as to why it was stamped by civil engineer, and they were, they were stamped by civil engineer and not an architect.
I, I thought they were stamped by, I'm sorry.
The stamp is from a civil engineer, and I, I think, speaking in absentia of my, my colleague on the board, Mr. Pizzani, I, I know how strongly he feels about the issue of the practicalism of architects. And we will get your stamp, please. Pardon me? We will provide you stamp. Thank you.
So we'll hold signature until that point, but may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, uh, with a home signature until a stamp from a representative architect is on.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you. Calling BOA nine zero one, three four one, three fourteen to three thirty, West Second Street. This is a change of occupancy from retail, a large amount to nine residential units, demolish the existing related system, and erect a new petition to create residential units. The violation's Article twenty-seven S, Section five, it's in the South Boston iPod. Article twenty, Article sixty-three, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the floor-toe ratio is excessive. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Morris, Attorney at Business Address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined with Joseph Roll, who has been working with me with our client on a community process part of this application, which is to convert existing commercial space of three forty West Broadway to foundry building. Convert that commercial space into nine dwelling units. My client, Ryan Connolly, owns the, uh, the commercial space. The commercial space, again, is, is, it's never been a particularly good fit for this location, it's on West Second Street, an overwhelmingly residential area. I actually lived at one time in the, in the foundry building, and the commercial space was there then, and there's been a lot of turnover there over the past years and even decades since the foundry building was itself converted from what was the foundry at the time into, into a multi-use building. The, uh, the application is quite straightforward. It's to create nine units out of the existing commercial space. It would be a mix of studios, one, two, and three-bedroom, uh, one and two-bedroom units and studios. I will point out, because I know the board will ask, that there is an outlier, a studio unit that is currently programmed at three hundred forty-three square feet. The reason for this is that in the conversations with the building trustees, my client learned that there was a desire to, to approximate the, the unit mix in terms of bedrooms and unit sizes of the current fifty-two units that are in the building. There are fifty-two residential units at present, of those fifty-two units, twelve are studios in less than four hundred and fifty square feet. There are in fact four studios that are less than four hundred square feet. Therefore, the, the current mix that is being proposed is two studio units. Again, one is at three hundred forty-three, the other is at four hundred seventy-three square feet. There are one-bedroom units, which are seven hundred, five hundred seventy-one, five hundred eighty-one, um, square feet, and there are two-bedroom units, their sizes are eight hundred eighty-five, eight hundred sixty-six, seven hundred fifty-two, and eleven hundred and fifty-seven square feet. There is no parking provided, um, there's no parking provided. The building does have, I think, thirty-seven or thirty-eight parking spaces. The building is a condominium building, many of the, many of the units are rented by, by the unit owners. I was actually living in a rental unit at one time, about twenty-five years ago, so there is some turnover in the parking spaces within the building. But again, the notion is that this is, uh, a residential building that is six tenths of a mile from Broadway Station and would be well-sit to anyone who wants to assume private mode of being a ownership and, and take alternate modes of transportation.
Okay, Mr. Maransy, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support. We did hold an onsite Butters' meeting, and there were no objections. This is somewhat underutilized commercial space, so people didn't see an issue with turning it into units. Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councillor Flynn's office. The councillor would like to go on record in support. There was an Butters' meeting, no concerns coming from the Butters', and St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association is in support of this. They haven't had any concerns as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Councillor Sabi George's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA nine six, eight three four, two forty-six, Athan Street. This is erecting two-family home and a parking on the ground floor. Violation's Article twenty-seven S, Section five, the South Boston iPod. Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the floor-toe ratio is excessive. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, side yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm George Maransy. I'm an attorney with the business address of three fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is a simple matter of new infills of family construction on Athan Street in South Boston. The lot in question is twelve hundred sixty-one square feet. It is currently raw land. The proposal is to erect a four-story, two-family dwelling. Ground floor arrives with two parking spaces. The two-bedroom units above would be twelve hundred thirty-nine and eleven hundred seventy-nine square feet. That's about it.
That's about it. Um, FAR?
FAR is two point five, maximum FAR, Article sixty-eight, is two point zero. The other violations are for insufficient side yard setbacks. The minimum's three feet. The building would be at one and zero, which is relatively typical of Athan Street. It is not a particularly heat block. The rear yard setback would be one foot, again, fairly typical of Athan Street. No usable open space is being provided because no, no roof deck is being provided due to concerns in the community. And under Article sixty-eight, for two-bedroom units, one and a half spaces per unit are requiring, which would mean that three spaces would be required with two units. There are in fact only two spaces in the garage.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support. We did hold an Butters' meeting, and there were really no objections raised. This is reasonably consistent with a few other projects on Athan Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councillor Flynn's office. The councillor would like to go on record in support. Like John mentioned, there were no objections from Director Butters, and they also presented at the St. Vincent's Neighborhood Associations, and people seem to be fine with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA Design Review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight eight nine, nine three nine, three ten to three twenty, Cambridge Street. This is a change of occupancy from restaurant to restaurant, Jim Fitness, to build out at three sixteen Cambridge Street, second floor. Violation's Article eight, Section seven, Jim Fitness Center is a forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Andrea Miller. I'm the building contractor here on behalf of Red Bull Donovan. This is Red Bull Donovan.
I'm Sandra Steele. I'm an attorney. My address is forty-four School Street, Boston, and I'm here representing Mr. Donovan.
So please tell us what's being proposed.
So we're here to propose the, the building outfit, uh, the second floor of three sixteen Cambridge Street, which is currently used as a storage space. It's an open space above Harvard Gardens Restaurant. And Red Bull Donovan is the owner of Reps Fitness Studio. He's proposing to add this, uh, space as his, um, has his third flagship studio. He has, currently has a spin cycle studio on one twenty-five Charles Street, also fifty-seven Phillips Street, is a yoga studio, and he just recently opened one Jamaica Plain on Central Street.
So how many square feet is this?
This is about twenty-six hundred square feet.
Okay. Now how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? And this is the second floor use?
Yes. It's supplemental to the restaurant downstairs, which is Harvard Gardens.
Is there anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessalyn Gro, at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to go on record in support. They've received unwavering support from the community and numerous Butters'. There have been no questions or concerns at this time, so we would like to see them open up.
So when you say at this time, you're in support? So when you say at this time, you're in support, maybe?
We are in support. Decision has been made. We are in support.
Okay.
I'd like to add that Renville has...
Hold on one minute. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Zoe Srazansky from Councilor Zakeham's office. I just want to echo Giselle's comments and go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
I just want to say that Renville did appear before the Beacon Hill Civic Association, as well as having the mayor's look through. And the Civic Association, I believe, has sent you their non-opposition, encouraging Renville to go ahead.
Do you need that for the file, Mark? Is, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling BOA 865-001, 28 Commonwealth Avenue. This is a proposed project that includes the construction of a new roof deck with a new stair hatch for the existing fifth floor. Violation is Article 16, Section 1. The building height is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Adam Gilmore, Meyer, Meyer Architects, and 28 Commonwealth Avenue.
Tell us what's being proposed.
Addition of a modest roof deck.
What's the size?
22 by 37 feet.
And it's only for one unit?
Correct.
Okay. Which unit?
Top floor.
Top floor unit. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate. Is there building code relief being requested as part of this?
It's just for height, nine inches over the existing ridge.
As part of the hatch?
I don't believe there is.
No building code relief? So you're not requesting building code relief?
The only issue, I believe, at hand is the height.
Is that the zoning?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that is building code relief?
Height.
Yes.
So zoning.
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 Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Giselle Garrow at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We are in support of this proposal. They have had an extensive community process with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay and also their neighbors. I believe that Elliot Laffer is behind me to also testify in support. So we are actually in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Elliot Laffer, Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. And we are not opposed for three reasons. It's just a deck that serves one unit. And it is fully in compliance with the guidelines that the Architectural Commission has for roof decks. And it is accessed by a hatch. Now, I don't know if that creates a building code thing, but it is a hatch access, not a...
Understood. That's why I kept raising that. I, I mean, it has been...
No code relief or something?
Yeah.
Thank you, Elliot. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard a second right here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling BOA 885-641, 78 Mount Vernon Street. This is to construct a new fourth-floor dormer addition and propose a rear bay window associated with the stair work. Violation is Article 13, Section 1. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chairman, I'm Francis McGuire, architect, representing my client, Christine Hayward. And I have with me Megan Morgan, representing the general contractor, Amy Chee, Custom Builders.
What's being proposed?
The issue is that we have a top-floor sleeping area, which was existing when my client purchased the property. It is unusable for a number of code reasons as a bedroom. It lacks proper ceiling clearance to get to the egress stair that leads to it. It also has ceiling heights that are below code. And so our proposal is to expand the rear dormer only, which gives us an overall ceiling height average that will comply, as well as clearance for the stair, and additionally provides and improves the dual second means egress that we share with our butter, who has written a letter in support.
So what's the size of this dormer? It sounds like it's small.
Yes. It adds about 127 feet. I have here the letter from the Beacon Hill Civic Association, which you may have.
Okay, hold on. Hold on. Hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate, and they solve the problems that are being laid out.
Questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Giselle Garrow at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We are in support of this proposal as well. We had excessive committee process. They have support or non-opposition from the Beacon Hill Civic Association. We also hosted an abutters meeting where no one seemed to share any questions or concerns about the project, so we're all good.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 899-754, 260 Newbury Street. This is a change of occupancy to mercantile retail use on the ground floor, first floors, and transient use to dwelling 17 units on the floors above. This project also includes construction of a new penthouse, addition roof deck, and rear addition with roof deck, in addition to new recessed entry and terrace in the proposed on Newbury Street. Violation is Article 8, Section 3. Restaurant is a conditional use. Article 8, Section 3, outdoor seating is conditional. And Article 32, Section 4, this is a G-card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney J. Augment for the applicant. With me is architect Adam Gilmore and Massimo Turizano, who's with the Adam Collin. To clarify for the record, we would like to respectfully withdraw, without prejudice, the applications for the restaurant conditional use. We had a meeting with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, and we don't have a restaurant operator at this time, so we will come back at a later time when we do. So we would only be going forward today on the G-card.
So you're, okay, and tell us about these transient dwellings. What are they?
They're hotel. So the use 15, which is permitted by right.
Use 15, it's not an Airbnb or anything like that. It's a regular hotel.
It's a regular hotel.
It's a regular hotel. Okay. So may I have a motion to withdraw this is, let's see, these are, to withdraw the request for relief from Article 8-3? May I have a motion for that, please? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now to Article 32-4, Christian?
Yes.
Hold on.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundhog Trust. We do have the BWSC approval letter. And in addition, we also have the stamped "No Harm" letter from the proponent's engineer.
We also have the letter, Madam Chair.
Okay, so may I have a motion for that?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
This is calling BOA 881-511, 8 Rutland Square. The companion case, BOA 881-510, 8 Rutland Square. Rutland Square here?
Yes, Evan's right here.
Oh, sorry. This is to construct a one-rail deck off the parlor level and roof deck with hatch access. The violation is Article 64, Section 9.4, townhouse rowhouse extension. We also have building code. Section 9th addition, 780 CMR, roof access, roof hatch proposed. Name and address for the record, please.
Evan W. Kuns, architect of record for the project.
Please tell us what to speak. First, of course, please address the building code issue.
The building code issue is that we are in conflict putting a headhouse on the roof from the Southend Neighborhood, Southend Historical Committee landlords. And we are proposing to put a roof hatch that is low and meets their criteria, but that doesn't meet the building code criteria. So we would prefer to put in the roof hatch, which is what we're proposing.
Okay, so you're requesting the relief from the building code. May I have a motion?
Motion to provide building code relief. Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So tell us about the roof deck. How many square feet is it?
I'm sorry?
How many square feet is that?
The deck is six feet by 16 and a half feet.
And you're also requesting a rear deck?
Yes. Oh, that's the size of the deck on the rear.
And a roof deck, right?
And the roof deck, I didn't understand that the roof deck was a variance request. So the roof deck, I can tell you in a second what it is. It is approximately 16 feet by 30 feet.
Okay. And bracket supported? The rear deck is bracket supported?
Yes.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Plans are adequate.
Questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam members of the board, my name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in full support of this proposal. It's a modest roof deck and also a rear deck, and the neighbors are particularly in support of the fact that it's going to be accessed by hatch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Michaela Parkin from City Council Kim Shady's office. We would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. The developer and his team met with the neighborhood associations, and they sent us a support letter and approval of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Is this a one or a two-family?
This will be two families.
This is a two-family. An owner-occupied?
No, it'll be two units, separate apartments.
And may I have a motion, please?
I have a letter of approval from the Neighborhood Association.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Calling next case, calling BOA 888-128, 22 Rare Parker Street. 22 presently consists of a three-story, two-family wood frame structure within a 3F 2000 zone, with an existing detached brick carriage house to the rear of the two-family structure. The proposal submitted seeks to demolish the existing carriage house to build a freestanding, single-family structure in conformity with a footprint of the existing carriage house, thereby increasing the total dwellings of the subject parcel to three families. Violation is Article 10, Section 1. Proposed parking is within five feet of the side lot line. Article 62, Section 62-30-12, a dwelling shall not be built to the rear of another dwelling. Article 62, Section 8, the lot frontage is insufficient. Article 62, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 62, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Article 62, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 62, Section 8, the dimensional regulations, the main entrance faces the side yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith. The business address of 359 Newbury Street, fifth floor in Boston. To my right, I have the architect, and then to his right, I have also the owner and proponent.
So please tell us what's being proposed?
Sure. Currently on site, we have a two-family. There is a pre-existing carriage house in your packet. You'll see, we have a refusal letter. We also have existing and then proposed site plans for existing carriage house, which is to be razed, and then a single-family structure to be erected, largely over the existing footprint. We have the architectural plans for you. We also have had on-site Mr. Lamb, who issued the letter of support from the Charlestown Preservation Society. And then also submitted for the record, we also have letters of support as well. It'll bring the total number of dwelling units on site to three. We are presently in a 3F 2000 sub-district.
And what's the area of the parcel?
The area of the parcel in total is 3,822 square feet. FAR permissible is a 2.0.
And what, so your violations are the open space, side yard, and main entrance, right?
Correct.
So can you speak to those?
Sure. So the rear lot line, what is required is 20 feet. What is required for the side yard is two and a half feet. What is, the only one that we are kind of intentionally creating is the main entrance facing towards the interior of the lot. It was by design to give deference and privacy to the most immediate butter to have the main entrance to the structure facing inward to the lot. So it's kind of a self-created violation.
So the existing structure has one unit?
No, the existing structure is an unutilized, structurally insufficient carriage house.
I'm sorry, the, I'm looking at the existing structure. The main building?
Yes.
Is two-family?
Correct.
And what's going to be the square footage of the proposed structure?
Roughly 1,600.
1,600 square feet.
Correct.
And the parking is all tandem?
Yes. It is not visible. There is arguably space for another compact closest to the structure, but there is a minimum of three as indicated on the proposed site plan.
And how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate. There's obviously the problem of two structures on one lot, but that's a pre-existing condition. What is the additional?
You're demolishing the existing building.
No, they're putting another one up in as well.
Correct. It's to be razed. There was some analysis to whether or not it could be salvaged. It's not really structurally sufficient. It's existing brick.
What is the additional square footage of the proposed, of the proposed existing one?
The new probable structure, 1,600 square feet.
Current one?
Your reenactment.
Not quite positive, sir. It's not livable presently. It's only a single floor. Yes.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, you said it's slightly larger than the existing footprint.
Yes.
My question is, how much larger?
I don't have a square footage right now for the current...
Okay, I can figure it out.
Yeah, it just, it looks like it bumps out more into the...
It's slightly narrow and slightly elongated as well, but...
And so, and it moves from a single story to a two-story? Is that what it does?
Correct.
So there is the issue of two buildings on one lot, and that's a pre-existing condition.
Well, but it was, I mean, it's still the use to add the additional, as far as, you know, from our, from our perspective, changing it to a dwelling that was as a passive collage, you know? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Quentin Log with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to go on record in support of this project. Two abutters meetings were held, lightly attended, and the project was supported by abutters in the area. I'd like to thank them for their attention to the privacy in this matter. That was a big thing with director of abutters, so thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in strong support of this proposal.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. BPD is under review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 872-545-208, Bremen Street. This is a build-in addition on the third floor. Violation is Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR, excuse me. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction, alteration to a roof profile. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is John Duran. It's 208 Bremen Street in East Boston.
So tell us what you're proposing.
Pardon?
Tell us what you're proposing.
We're proposing addition in the third floor to complete the profile of the house. Currently, the first floor and second floor, they already have an addition before. And we need to enlarge one existing bedroom and make an additional bedroom in the third floor.
Units in this building?
It's a three-family unit, ma'am.
It's a three-family?
Yes, ma'am.
And how large is this addition?
It's going to be 250 square feet, but it's not going to be different to the shape of the house right now. It's going to be inside of the blue line of the house.
Okay, and are you proposing a deck on this building?
No, there is no space for a deck. They have egress to the iron stairs.
And no roof deck?
No, ma'am.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate. We have the same problem that I brought up before, which is it stands by a structural engineer, not an architect.
Yes, sir.
Will you provide stamped drawings by an architect?
Yes, there's no problem. I can provide.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go in record in support. The applicant completed the community process back in October. And during the meeting, no concerns were expressed by, and actually, he received a strong support from the direct abutters.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to work, to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review of small, but still, and, but hold signature until we have a set of drawings stamped by an architect.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos, you're all set.
Following the last case, 1030, calling BOA 874-954-303 to 305 Bennington Street. They're seeking to demolish an existing building to erect a four-story mixed-use building with five residential units and one retail space. The building will include a fire staircase and a full sprinkles system. The violation to Article 53, Section 12, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 12, the height is excessive. Article 53, Section 12, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 12, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 56, our street parking is insufficient. I'm glad to see you moving forward with this one. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 15 Broad Street from Drago and Tiscano. I'm here with Steve Stoico, the owner of the property at 303-305 Bennington Street, as well as Leo Henigan, who from LFH drafted the plans. As was mentioned, we're seeking to raise the existing two-story structure. In doing so, we'd be creating a new first-floor retail space and then four additional, I'm sorry, five additional units on top. This particular area is a neighborhood shopping district. The lot size is 1,736 square feet. Total building square footage is 4,400 square feet. When this is done right now, as it stands, this building houses retail space on the first floor and one large apartment above it. The new plan would call for just utilities in the basement. The first floor would also have a new retail space, 1,050 square feet. The second and third floor would house two units each, and then the fourth floor would have the one larger unit. The average sizes of those units are 630 square feet, with the largest being 1,050 on the fourth floor. It's a two-bed, two-bath. All the other units are one-bed, one-bath units.
Where's your handicapped unit?
Test for that, handicap accessible unit. So the first floor is accessible?
No, the retail space I see is accessible, but the question is about the residential space. Is there, because it looks like it's, it's not an elevator building, so, so where is the handicapped unit?
So, you mean for accessibility, so we weren't cited for any building code violation on that? We did have the first floor completely accessible. There is no elevator on the building, so.
Is there a possibility of putting an elevator in?
I don't think so. Fit, that the.
The dimensions don't, won't work.
For that, but it did not get called out. To go over the violations as well?
Oh, yes, for one minute, though, can you speak to the roof deck?
Yes, it's an exclusive roof deck to just the top floor unit, with just a hatch.
Okay, yes, please go through the violations.
And that's roughly 500 square foot roof deck on top. So it is a neighborhood shopping district. The FAR for that area is one, what's allowable, we're at 2.53. The height, although we are at 35 feet, we are a four-story building, so in stories where we'd be cited. Open space, we're slightly under, it's 50 per. Dwelling unit is allowed, we're at 40 per. And our rear yard setback, 20 is what's allowed, we're at 10. We are not providing parking, there's none there now. However, we are literally two-minute walk to the airport T station, and there is resident as well as two-hour parking. I did provide a map overview that shows all of the existing parking, and at night, that's open to the general public as well. There's just nowhere to put parking on that site. This would be a condo project. I submitted six letters of support from all of our direct abutters.
Um, hold on, um, what was I, I was going to ask you a question about, and how many bedrooms in, per unit? Two bedrooms?
No, they're all one-bed, one-bath, except the top floor is two-bed and two-bath.
Two beds, two baths. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jesus Garcia with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant completed the community process back in the fall, last year. We have an abutters meeting in September. During the abutters meeting, no concerns were expressed about this proposal, and also the project was presented in front of the Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The councilor would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
My name's Charles DePrima. I live at 440 Saratoga Street, and, which is right behind in the Day Square area. And my wife doesn't drive, we have two young children, so any improvement to the square is very beneficial to us. I've talked to a lot of neighbors, a lot of them couldn't take off of work to come here to support, but we frequent the square for gallons of milk, shopping, retail. Day Square has, in our opinion, been a little antiquated, and anything new out there helps us, even including some residential up above, because there's people out there with lights on, and I send an 11-year-old over to get milk, and if there's people living around and some lights, it helps us.
Makes a difference.
So we support anything in the square. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck. The board will take a 10-minute break and will reconvene at 1 o'clock.
It's 2:31, 2:33, West Street. Want to come up here, they can sit down. That's going to be the first case until 11:30.
The Board of Appeal is back in session. Let's go straight to the rediscussions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the first case for rediscussions for 11:30, BOA 903-904-231-233, West Street. Is West Street here? Might go quicker than we expected. Calling the next case, BOA 897-247-296, Naponton Avenue. There's a companion case, BOA 897-256-296, Naponton Avenue. No, the gentleman's here. I was just talking to him. He's on his phone outside.
Okay, let's move on.
All right. Well, the next case, calling BOA 890-234-24, Montrose Street. We have a winner. Hold on to those, Kevin. This is to remove and rebuild the front and rear porch and steer it to be built on the existing footprint. The violation of Article 50, Section 29. Side yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Monique Wallace, 24 Montrose Street, Roxbury, Mass.
Were you at the subcommittee meeting?
On Thursday night, yes, I was.
On Thursday night, yes. We heard the presentation by the applicant on Montrose Street. However, Thursday feels like a long time away from me, so I don't remember clearly. But was it that there was a Butters who had concerns about it?
Yes.
Is that letter in the file, Mark?
Not sure.
So, we just wanted to bring it here. And so just tell us for the board what you're proposing.
Okay, so the front was approved, but the rear was denied, which they were saying about, I guess, the length of the porch going out versus in.
Yeah.
But all of the space is our personal backyard, so it's not interfering with anybody else.
Mm-hmm.
No, I think she's looking for... What exactly are you looking for?
There was a letter from a Butters.
There's a few of them.
Talking about the issues, right?
There's a couple here.
Yeah. Because it talks about being a good neighbor and just maintaining the property. So basically, it sounds like it's more of a neighborliness. Is anybody here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services? I know you're new, but can you help this applicant? Because this is not a big project, however, you know, it sounds like there needs to be some bridge mending. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here... Are you speaking in support?
I am speaking in support, yes.
And you're speaking in support?
Well, yes.
So put your name and address on the record and tell us what you're thinking.
Madam Chair, first.
Oh, you go, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record to support the project. There wasn't a Butters and a Neighborhood Association meeting. The Neighborhood Association meeting, well, Roxbury Path Forward, they said they typically don't take stances on when it's something like, you know, this, but they provided their support either way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am. Whatever you are, it's board opposition. Put your name and address on the record.
I'm Angela Fleming, 22 Montrose, 22 A.
Please.
Yes, I'm Angela Fleming, and I live at 22, 22 A., Montrose Street. And these are my neighbors since 1982. So I do support their project. And I still need to see the new plans, but I would support the project because I saw that, I met with their architect, and he gave me a rundown, which he will be showing me the plans probably next week or sometime, but for right now, I would support it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Support still?
Are you a Butter to this project?
No, I'm across the street.
Okay, you can still speak and support our opposition.
Gerald Spence, 33 Montrose Street, Roxbury, in support of my neighbors to build their rear deck and their rear porch. They have an elderly, her granddad and her dad, he's 90. He needs a little access to get outside on the support with the tiplets for the...
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDH.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And please, Mayor's Office, can you help with any kind of good neighborly things? Okay? Thank you.
I'm gonna go back...
Thank you, ladies.
I'm gonna go back to the two cases I called earlier. The gentleman was outside. Calling BOA 897-247-296, Naponton Avenue. It's companion case, BOA 897-256-296, Naponton Avenue. This is for 296, Naponton Ave., remove porches, build new addition, violations Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback, Article 65, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback, Article 65, Section 9, insufficient usable open space for a dwelling unit, and Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. This is also for 296, Naponton. Proposed two off-street parking, the violation of Article 65, Section 41. Off-street parking shall not be located in any part of the front yard, and Article 65, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
James, it's 709 Mill Street, Easton, Mass.
So tell us what's being proposed. Are you going ahead with both projects?
No, right now, we'd like to withdraw the existing building permit to go back to one that was already approved. So right now, we're just looking for the parking.
So may I have a motion for denial for...
Make a...
Yes, this is for BOA 897-247.
Correct.
Is there a section?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So tell us about the parking.
The parking, we're just trying to get some parking on the property, which I don't know if you guys have the plans, but I did bring some for a couple spots.
Has Bob seen it?
Was this the project?
Get your one down the hem, Phil.
No, this is the project that had kind of a long rear addition to it that we had an issue.
Yeah, I think there was like nine units.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so this is just for the two parking spots?
That's correct.
And so where is the location of these parkings?
Madam Chair, we're just denied that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
The only issue is the parking.
It's the parking, yes. So tell us about the parking.
The parking is on the side beneath it. Plans, I thought you guys had the plans, I'm sorry. So we're looking for a curb cut and a couple parking spots.
Bob, are you looking at that?
Yeah, looks like it's got front yard parking.
Looks like, yeah, you know what, I kind of remember this case.
The two spaces, one and a half of the space is actually right in the front yard, right up to the back of the sidewalk.
And there's no way of accommodating of... Tell us.
It doesn't look like you can get pushed back.
No, it can't.
So this, so just tell us, is there parking on that side of the street? Is there parking allowed in front of that house? Okay?
So then all you're doing is, if you do the curb cut, you're replacing one street parking with one off-street. So it's a net zero.
Right.
Right.
I would make a motion for the deny.
Wait, is it... So, I'm sorry, I just cannot read these plans. So the space is constantly pushed back?
No, not from what I can tell. I haven't trouble reading.
There's a bulkhead.
Is that what it says? Glad somebody has better eyesight. Is that what it says? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are sadly not side decision.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 837-872-167, West 8th Street. This is accessory parking for spaces for two vehicles, the violation of Article 10, Section 1. Parking to be located five feet from the side lot line. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking and loading requirement maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stefanoff, 93 F Street.
Christina Floresova, 167 West 8th Street.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed.
I've reconfigured the steps, reseating them into the building to allow for proper passage of a vehicle in the proposed driveway. And you'll see that in the building. So before the steps were in the way of access.
Wait, 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 which is...
This is the one that came from...
Well, I'm sorry. What address are we talking about?
167 West 8th.
Okay.
So I got two big ones for you to enter into the system.
Can't wait.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support. We did hold an onsite Butters meeting. There were no objections because parking is very tight in this area. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The Councilor would like to go on record in support. Butters seem okay with this proposal and City Side Neighborhood Association as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
I'm just looking at them. They appear to be adequate.
Any questions from the board? Do you have a motion, please?
Bob's got a question.
I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Madam Chair, ladies, members of the board, there's an existing light pole right in front of the driveway, the proposed driveway, and I'm still a little concerned about the distance between the stairs. But they're gonna remove the existing brick steps?
Yes.
They're gonna be removed?
Yes.
Okay, so that's no longer an issue, but the flag, the light pole will have to be...
Yes. So I've contacted a contractor. We've talked about it, it's entirely possible.
Okay.
I just didn't want to proceed with any of that until, you know, the overall zoning was approved.
Okay.
May I have a motion, please?
So, I'm sorry, all that's in the plans, Doug?
Not, we have to move the pole.
That's not in the plan?
That's not in the plans.
All right, so that should be a proviso.
Okay.
So what's the motion and what's the proviso?
Motion is to approve with a proviso that the light pole be removed.
It's actually moved.
Moved, yes, sir.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're outside.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last case for 11:30, calling BOA 866-356-806, East 3rd Street. This is a change of occupancy of a two-family dwelling, full interior renovation of a two-family, extend living space to the basement, and add second means of egress by extending exterior rear porch and new roof, propose two off-street parking, violation of Article 27S, Section 5, it's in the south portion, IPod, Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient, and Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Attorney Peter Calibraci, Calibraci Law Associates at One Boston Place, 26th floor, Boston, Massachusetts. Represent the applicant, Adam Disardi, and to my left is the property owner, Radina Joko.
So tell us what you're proposing.
So the project entails the interior renovation of a single-family row house, and the renovation's purpose is to make it from a single family to a two-family.
Why were you deferred the last time?
I'm sorry.
Why was the project deferred?
I was not present last time, and I believe there was a problem with the plans.
Okay.
There was a handwritten notation or drawing on the prior version of the plans. That's been corrected. We submitted a package to the board yesterday with the updated plans.
Do you have it, Mr. Ehrlich?
I am catching up, so...
And I have copies here if the board would like.
Okay, so, yes, and so, so talk us through this. So tell us first about the extension into the basement.
And you go through the bedroom?
So the use of the basement is a bedroom?
Down.
So tell us about the proposed use of the basement.
Just a note for the record, that attachment four is the updated plan that Madam Chairwoman asked for.
What's the use of the basement?
Now, it's really, it's not livable space.
So you're not proposing, because it talks in this, it says change of occupancy to a two-family dwelling, extend living space to the basement.
Yes. So now it's one family, you're doing two families. Basement is gonna be, first floor, one family, and second floor and third floor, one family.
Okay, so the basement, the first one, the basement, is one family?
Yes.
So what's going to be in the basement? Are there gonna be bedrooms?
One bedroom, but I have a door and a window.
And so what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Seven feet, three inches.
Seven feet, three inches?
I have a small detail. This section here showing the height of the basement.
Attachment three to the memo.
Okay. Okay, so, and what's the square footage of the entire first unit?
Six thirty-eight, one floor.
So it's twelve hundred square feet?
Yes, so plus six thirty-eight is...
And plus the second floor is the same?
Same, all four floors.
Okay. And then, let's see, what were the violations? The IPod, the open space, side yard. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
So let me ask you some questions about the proposed basement floor plan. I see an interior staircase that for, how, this is a two, this is a two-unit.
Yes, the proposed construction is...
How does the second unit get access to the mechanical?
So the, so everyone has access out the existing front door to come and go? There is, the deck that's being proposed is to allow from the third floor down access to the ground level, and it's from there that each unit owner can access.
But through the unit, they need to have separate access.
Yes, each floor is separate.
The second floor is on the common area. If you see proposed first floor plan, water and gas meter, the spot closer.
Oh, okay, so, all right, so it'll be located within each unit?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And the floor-to-ceiling height is adequate? Did you say seven-three?
Seven-three, seven-four, berries. Yeah, I chose seven, that's what I chose.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We did hold an onsite Butters meeting for this project. They are expanding in the back and providing parking, which is something that a few other houses on this block have also done. There were no real objections raised to that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solomon, the Council at large, Michael Flaherty. Simply due to the communal effort that went into the drafting of Article 68, the council is unable to support the project for this particular time.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're outside.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go to a project I called previous. Calling BOA 903-904-231 to 233, West Street. Is West Street here? Madam Chair, make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now, I'm gonna go to the recommendations of the subcommittee, which met on Thursday, January 24th, at 5:00 at 1010 Mass Ave. First project, BOA 901-253-78, Washington Street, was 244 square foot dormer addition in existing two-family, two-gabled dormers was approved. BOA 876-476-21, South Russell Street, was a replacement existing rear structure, proposed seven-by-14 deck was approved. BOA 873-789-18, Yarmouth Street, Yarmouth Street, was to construct two decks off the rear wall and related doors, it was approved. BOA 890-026-753, East Broadway, was to change occupancy, would take out existing bagel shop. There was, it was denied without prejudice, was an individual with no show. BOA 902-821-33 to 39, South Huntington Ave., was to construct a Dunkin' Donuts restaurant, an existing space, was approved with design review. BOA 896-860-206 to 208, Harold Street, was denied without prejudice for a no-show. Case BOA 890-234 was heard today. BOA 898-589-14, Tuttle Street, was an enclosed front porch, it was approved with design review. BOA 858-186-109, Glenway Street, was a removed closet and open space in the basement built to the wall to separate common area and extend living space to the first floor, was approved. BOA 896-200-39, Crockett Avenue, was a two-and-a-half-story addition in the rear side of the house, it was approved. BOA 804-148, 12 Lonsdale Street, was an extended first-floor apartment and living space into the basement for a new bedroom, was approved. BOA 897-256-296, Naponton Ave., was heard today. BOA 894-291-62, Fairmont Street, it was adding dormers and existing roof, credentialed third floor is deferred to February 5th. BOA 853-295-31, Del Ave., was heard today. BOA 903-904-231 to 233, West Street, was deferred to February 5th. BOA 616-440-31, Weld Hill Street, was a partial renovation of Unit 2 and add two dormers, it was approved. BOA 888-6-336-177... BOA 886-336-177, Beach Street, was adding addition that would extend homes to meet current sunroom, it was approved. BOA 868-628-111, Bell Avenue, was a demolished enclosed porch and rebuild an attached addition in existing front, a 10-by-6-foot deck, was approved. BOA 872-945-55, Toinell Street, it was construct a new second-story addition, existing first-floor footprint, it was approved. BOA 865-897-11, Swan Street, was to construct a new rear addition on an existing single-family, was approved with design review. And this was for rediscussions. BOA 861-576-1413, 1413 West Ford Street, was to change the occupancy of a single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling legalized, the two-family was approved. And BOA 413, it was companion case, BOA 413, East Ford Street, was building code, it was denied without prejudice.
So I just had a question, Mr. Fortune, on Tuttle Street, do we need to hear that case now?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
On Tuttle Street?
Is Tuttle Street here?
I, I, just, no, it's all set? Okay.
No, Tuttle Street was fine.
Okay, okay, may I have a motion, please?
Just one, one point. It was 413 West Ford Street, not 14.
Okay, okay, thanks, thanks for clarifying the record. May I have a motion, please?
Motion carries with the recommendation of the subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Meeting is adjourned.